I think Jen's still on the phone, at least, so she can catch up with us. It is 6:32 on Tuesday, November 17th, 2020, and we're going to call the school committee meeting to order. I will have to go back and forth between the agenda and here. So we have a consent agenda, which only includes our minutes from November 4th. If anybody got a chance to look at the minutes from November 4th, can you please make a motion to approve?
I can make a motion to approve. My computer's frozen. Am I frozen?
No.
No.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any comments, edits on the minutes? All good? All in favor to approve the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Approved unanimously. Next, we have our visitors' comments section. So I will go to visitors. If any one of our visitors would like to make a comment, please use the hand raised feature on your Zoom, and we will move you to the panel for you to be able to speak. We'll give you about 30 seconds or so. Alex says, "We're waiting for that. I sent Jen Bartos my link." I'm assuming she will be able to get on, right?
She should. I mean, yeah, same panel.
I wanted to make sure.
That's me, you, and Jen, so we should be good.
All right, just wanted to double check. That's good. All right, so in the meantime, I do not see any hands raised among our visitors. Thank you for being here, and thank you for attending our school committee meeting. Appreciate it. So with that, we're going to move to Marcus. Is Marcus with us? I didn't even check if he was on the other side.
I don't, I don't see him.
Yeah, I don't either. All right, so we don't have Marcus. That's okay. We'll have him next time. I'm kind of interested in hearing student experiences, and we've been missing that, so hopefully next time we can have Marcus. All right, moving into new business, we have two private school approvals to to listen to, and then we have our approvals to consider at the end of those presentations or discussions. One is Children's First, and Donna's here to present, and we have McDuffie. Steve's here to present. Let's start with Children's First. Donna, what would you share with us?
Thank you for having me tonight. This is our annual approval request for our private kindergarten. We've started our, I think this is our fourth class. Our first class was 2017, 2018, and we had a successful year last year with 10 students. And, no, last year was smaller. I think it was six or seven students. This year, it's larger. We have 15 students. We took one of the preschool classrooms so that they could be a unique cohort and not mix at all with any of the school age kids. So they're in the pre-K classroom, 15 students with two teachers, and so they divide up into seven or eight kids in a group, while one group's outside, the other group is doing some indoor learning, and then they switch off. They're doing really well. Everything's going well here. They're continuing to use the same curriculum that we've submitted in past years. They're using Teaching Strategies Gold as we've submitted in past years for their primary assessment. So really, no difference between any previous years that we've made a request for approval other than this year having added a second teacher and gone up a little bit, in particular due to the pandemic. A lot of families that with kids going into kindergarten were requesting an extra year of preschool. And so we said that we would go a little bit higher in our group size. In all of our previous applications, we've had a minimum of six, maximum of 50, and always said if we went over 10, we would add a second teacher. So that's what we did this year. Any questions for me?
One, one quick note that I have for you. I was listening to another school committee meeting last night, and Children's First was mentioned in that conversation, so my ears perked with respect to the pods that you have. And they were trying to determine whether or not it was something that they could do in their school district. So just wanted to share that with you. Any questions for, for Donna and Children's First? None. Okay. So we can do two ways. We can either make Donna wait and then vote all at once, or we can vote for Children's First now. What would you like to do? Donna, do you mind waiting until we?
Waiting here, Steve.
So let's do that. Let's finish this. Let's finish this segment altogether, then.
Awesome. I'll mute then.
Cool. Thank you. Maybe we'll think of some other questions, too, in the meantime. Steve, welcome. How you doing?
Oh, doing just fine. Thank you.
That's good. So let's start with what you have to share with us.
Sure. I trust that you have our rather lengthy submission, our yearly submission, and that you've reviewed it. Yeah, happy to have Donna sitting on here. She's heard me now and had her kids at McDuffie for quite a while. What are we, six or seven, year seven of, of hearing me talk? So anyway, McDuffie, very much our focus in the past year, of course, has been getting ready to host our students safely in times of COVID. We, like most schools, shut down over March break, but we had the special, special situation of 21 students who were having a hard time getting home to places internationally. And so we kept our boarding house open through to June as we were running remote classes. I think that gave us a little bit of a head start in terms of getting ourselves ready to reopen, having had to work so closely with the Board of Health to handle that boarding student population in the spring. So we got a little bit out in front of things, and were able to open for in-person classes just after Labor Day. We are down in our student population from, I believe it was 263 last year, down to 193 right now. We rely on an international boarding population for a lot of our enrollment. And of course, there are a lot of people sitting, waiting on the sidelines, seeing what, how America's going to respond to this crisis. So we are holding on, looking to rebound at the other side of this pandemic. And it's great that we've had some recent, recent good news in that regard. We offered our students the opportunity to either learn remotely or to come and be in in-person classes. So we have about 130 of our students are in the building. The remaining 60 or so are studying full-time remotely. Many of those are international because they can't come to us, and yet we're continuing to educate them. And that has its own problem with a 12- to 14-hour time difference. So we are working very hard. Our teachers are working incredibly hard to make that work in a hybrid classroom, recording classes, having students in person remotely, and then recording and sharing with them. It is, it is a struggle, and we're holding in there. I welcome any of your questions or comments.
Do you expect anyone to remain here at your campus through the holidays? Because they can't travel?
Yeah, we, we have been asking our students to declare their plans. Certainly Thanksgiving's the first one that's coming up. We didn't have that many students who required our help, but we have moved those students into homestay situations, so that they're staying with local families. We will make that same offer for the December break, and if the students are not planning to go home, we'll try to place them. And then we've worked with the Board of Health to try to get a reentry plan that works for Thanksgiving, December, and March breaks that involve, we'll be going remote for a week, most likely after each one of those breaks, in order to just allow the general population to, to keep safe from each other while our, our boarding students come back. And then also, basically contact tracing everyone to see what they did over each of those breaks and adding additional protocols if necessary.
Any questions for Steve?
How's it going with your ventilation?
Well, we are, we're a school that relies on fresh air ventilation. We don't have forced air. So the engineering plan was, was to certify each room at, at 150% of the advisable ventilation or, or the, sorry, the code for ventilation. You know, as an example, I know Granby has an enclosed gymnasium, and that's got to be a real issue for us. We're bringing in fresh air, but we're also pushing with the side doors open, with blowers on the whole time to, to get up to the town's recommendation, which is five times code for the gym. So we just started indoor sports. I think it was two weeks ago. And then, you know, you're, you're dealing with the recommendations from the state, which you go and get yourself certified for 150%. And then the state says, "Well, if it's cold, just make sure the windows are open a crack." So you're balancing different advice, trying to keep the students safe and warm, so they can learn. That's a long answer. It's going okay. chilly sometimes.
Yeah, we know.
18 tomorrow morning. That will be a telling, telling day.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I heard that they were talking about, you know, we have heat days, and they were talking about cold days, potentially, if it goes below zero or something, so. You know, this is an odd year to ask this question, but since we are exploring technology and what we can do, every year I'm, I've been asking you the last so many years whether there is any collaboration with Granby, what we are doing together. Is there anything of that nature that is going on? Whether, you know, in this environment, technologically or otherwise?
Well, it's an interesting question, because I remember over the years, right? And this is our 10th year now in, in our Granby location. Seems like yesterday. Our student population of Granby residents peaked at 51 a few years ago. I looked today just to get prepared for this. I think the number's either 13 or 14 students from Granby. It is not as pervasive as it was. And, and I believe that when we were talking about cooperation and collaboration before, there was that barrier, that, that sense that McDuffie in some way might be, you know, have, have intentions that, that wouldn't be straightforward. Given our student population right now, I'm more than willing to signal, signal an openness to Carol to have a dialogue, if you're willing, as a school board. I think the last time we answered that question, it wasn't last year. It was the year before, and we said we'd stick a pin in it until, until Granby felt that they were a little in a, in a better place to, to talk about that collaboration. So nothing has really happened other than the, the legally required conversations that we've had, but certainly willing to, to extend that offer.
I'm sure it's, it's the same the other, the other way around also, if there is anything that we can collaborate on. Just since you mentioned the numbers, the numbers submitted to DESI seem to indicate 17 students from Granby. Okay, you have a cover letter where you are referring to 30 students from Granby. I don't know which one is.
Well, and the, the other would be, it, it's, we have 50, 58 students from Granby, if you include the fact that our borders are residents of Granby. And that's always an interesting, and another 12 residential assistants who live in. But in terms of the students, I believe the, the number is, the 17's probably right. Apologies for the, the cover letter.
Easy to clarify. Any other questions for Steve and McDuffie? Okay, so are, some of you are familiar with this process. So what we do, we're going to do two separate votes to approve each one of these schools. And for those folks who are not familiar, the public school district has the authority and the responsibility to review the submitted documents and then, and then vote for approval. On the other side, there are not really many cases unless there are major discrepancies, violations, there is really, beyond that symbolic authority, there isn't really a lot of, a lot of concern on that. But we always had some conversations, at times interesting conversations. But we, you know, we appreciate the presence of, of both institutions in our, in our town, you know, sharing the responsibility of, of educating students. So with that, we're going to do two votes, one for Children's First and one for McDuffie. If we can have a motion to approve the, can you remind me, so this always happens around this time, and I always ask, what is the school year that we are, or what is the year that we are approving for?
Carol, you're muted.
I was going to say, on their paperwork, I saw 2020 to 2021.
Right. So it already started, and this is something that I always come back to. The school year already started.
Right.
And I always thought that the timing was kind of interesting and odd, because we're doing an approval conversation, but the school year already started. I mean, you're in session. So it almost makes it a formality, and you know, it is what it is. So we will ask for a motion to approve Children's First application for the school year 2020-21.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any additional questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Approved unanimously. Thank you. Then I would like to have a motion to approve McDuffie School's application for the school year 2020-21.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All right, approved unanimously. Thank you, Donna. Thank you, Steve, for coming. Appreciate it. Well, the school committee will see you next year.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Bye. Have a good night.
Emery, Emery, I'll make a note of, of that, that we should do it sooner. You know, I mean, I didn't, I didn't receive, I don't think I received Steve's until October. But it does, it does kind of seem like a formality if we're doing it in November, when school starts in September.
Yeah.
So I'll make a, I'll make a note of that. For, I'll make a note of that for the next person.
Yes, same with me. I, this is a question that I actually, I've been asking for a while. I don't know that there was a clear answer. It may also be related with the timing of data gathering and all that, but it doesn't change the fact that it is actually an exercise after, you know, schools are in session. So thank you for that. Cool. So moving to.
Yep, so the, the next item.
Next item is School Committee Policy, Section K for Community Relations.
So my review of the records indicates that this policy was drafted using MASC's policies. It was reviewed by the policy subcommittee and vetted by our attorney. So the sections outlined are ready for approval by the school committee. So I highlighted the ones that were updated.
Okay, so typically, we, we review, discuss, and then come back the following meeting. Do you have any emergency around this section that may keep us from doing that?
But I think it already went to, I mean, based on my emails, it shows that it went to the policy.
So this is one of those that came once and then never came back?
Yeah.
Okay, so a couple of comments. Well, actually, first, let me ask the school committee what questions, comments you may have.
Well, I have a question. Have we met as a school committee, as the, we had a policy committee yet? Aren't we supposed to be there as, I feel like I have not, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, and we were confused that we thought it was Jen and Jen, but like, I still haven't heard anything about anything.
So these are still left over from last?
Previous.
Yeah.
So the next couple that I have left to do are, are, is J, which is, will require the, the policy subcommittee.
We had started, but did not finish that one.
Right, but are the dates different than the dates that we have? Like, I just need with my personal schedule and that schedule, like, I don't have any dates written down. Are they the same days as our school committee dates?
Are you on this, on the policy committee?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so that, it's up to you to determine when.
So it's Audrey and Jen Bartos, right?
I think that's what we were discussing, yes, but I still haven't heard anything.
Yes, I haven't, I'm still.
We haven't done anything.
Right, we haven't done anything, because I'm still trying to finish up.
Last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just a reminder.
We had so many done, that it was, when we were waiting for something from the attorneys and from some outside people, I think one was Dr. Cool, because she had been working on one. So we, we're still have a lot to catch up on. We had a lot, Jen and I had been sitting with Cheryl, and we had a lot that was gone through, that was just waiting for like final approvals for people. So I, I don't think that we're like behind on anything or that you missed out on anything yet. This was all work that's been done previously.
Yes.
I just remember a couple of weeks ago it being mentioned that you were trying to email somebody, and then I was like, but I never got an email, and I'm the one that's on it. So that, just kind of bringing it up, it made me think of it again. So that's all.
Thanks for the reminder, Audrey. I have a quick reminder for everyone as well that our subcommittees, we still need to post those meetings. They're not, you know, they're not, your decisions aren't binding, because it's not a quorum of the committee. But when we contacted the AG's office, they, they advised us that it's good practice to post any meeting of the school committee, including subcommittees. Just, just a quick note on that. And you can meet anytime you want, anytime that is convenient for you.
So Jaclyn would post it.
Yes, that's what we were told. Yep. So going back to Section K, did anyone get a chance? Section K, if you had not previously? I, I went through it, even though, you know, we had it before, and I have a couple of questions. Carol, can you hear us? Okay, so the first question is related to the section about visitors. Given that this may go into effect immediately, there is really nothing there that obviously refers to our abnormal situation right now. Do we get to put a qualifier that says, you know, that policy's not really in effect as we are in this pandemic?
I think, wouldn't the reopening plan supersede right now?
Well, I don't know that there, actually, policy is a policy. So we should really make sure that it is, it is captured by the school committee, at least in the minutes that until the pandemic is over, the visitors' section is not, is, is what's in the reopening plan and not in the, in the policy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because it does, you know, we have stricter visitor requirements in the reopening plan.
But does it need to be added to this document so that, you know?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking that we may be able to add a note that says, you know, not, you know, not in effect until.
After the pandemic.
After, after, yeah.
Okay. So when.
School committee.
Cheryl, about some of that stuff, if it was anything that was a one-off type situation, it shouldn't be, because this is our overall policy manual. So we can, if we have additional documentation, and I'm, and it's entirely possible that I misunderstood, but the way she had explained it to us is this is our massive, regular, policy-binding thing. So if we have other things, like, we can't go through every single thing, that, that document is so large. There's probably other areas that the pandemic is impacting that exist as well. So if there's other things supersede what's in the policy manual, that's what is. And there's kind, I feel like in one of the, like, forwards or whatever, there's conversation around that, but I don't think we want to have, go, have to go through. If we start a precedent where we're going to start outlining things that are going to be outlined differently because of the pandemic, then we have to go through the entire document again and touch upon that's adjusted by the pandemic. So I don't think we want to start that, because we'll never finish the policy.
So you are, you are correct, Jen. That's, that's absolutely true. What I was suggesting, maybe not as clearly, I was thinking that when there is an extraordinary situation and you create a temporary policy, you just include it there and then put an expiration to it, so it expires. And I may be completely off as well. I don't recall exactly. There was something, otherwise, that policy is a policy. You're absolutely right. We don't, you know, we don't really tinker with that policy. It just stays what it is. I'm just kind of worrying that, you know, given where we are, where do we make sure that it's understood that's not the policy with respect to visitors? That's going to be in effect. It's what's in the reopening plan.
Yeah. Wouldn't it be posted on, that would be a posted policy, because it's a change from the norm. So we're making an exception, and like on the doors for entry, it would be a posted policy? Or during the phases, a posted policy sent out to the parents and guardians of the students?
Well, that's the real, I mean.
Those are the exceptions.
Yeah, we've never had a reopening plan. We always went by our policies. This year, we had to have a reopening plan, and we have all new requirements for, for everything, you know, we're doing. So I believe that the reopening plan is overrides the policies at this point.
So if everybody's comfortable with that, I think that's good, because this is a, this is an extraordinary situation. We don't have to create exceptions as long as it's clear that that section of the policy is superseded by the reopening plan. Anything else? So even though we. Go ahead.
This is just our first read?
Because, you know, we have two new members, I would still suggest that we do it that way, if it's okay, Carol. And then next time, we just vote on this one. Okay.
Okay.
The full committee has visibility into it. So this was our first reading of it. Thank you for sharing that, Carol. Appreciate it. The next item on our new business.
I have a quick question I just thought of. Once this document is final, where is it put so that families have access to it?
So it's in the school committee folder on the website under policies.
Is it there currently or no, or like is the old version there?
No, no, no. I, I've put every single one. I've, I've separated them out, and I've put them up by letter. And so all of them are there that have been approved by the school committee. So if you go there now, you'll find them.
Yeah, I know there was a transition last year. Sorry, Jen. Yeah, I know there was a transition last year. Sorry, Jen. With the new app.
That were out there that we hadn't even gone through because even though we haven't gone through them, there's still the policies. So even if they are outdated, it's what we have. So we had to have it out there and we're just.
Right. For a while, there wasn't things posted, though I think when we got the new website and the app and all of that, things were nowhere for a little while. So I was just clarifying. I haven't been on in a while. I'll fully admit. So thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. Anything else? All right. Let's move on to Xerox contract.
Yeah. So I just, um, there's, um, the proposal from Xerox I put in your guys' folder, um, last week. I just wanted you guys to take a look at this real quick. Um, they're our current vendor for, um, our copy machines. Um, and this new agreement would, um, end our current one and this one would start right away. Um, and based on pricing, um, and, uh, including a few, uh, one or two new machines at the high school. We'd end up saving roughly eight to $10,000, uh, for this new contract. So I just wanted you guys to review it. Um, if you had any questions, obviously, we can, we can talk about it.
So we, or actually, uh, does anybody have any questions before I jump in?
I do. So I'm assuming these are like, um, every so many years, we renew a contract with them? And get new units?
Yep.
And this would be with new units, obviously, too?
Uh, it would be with one definitely at the high school. It may be, um, maybe one more. Most of the units that we have in the current contract are, are their, um, newest model. So we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be switching them out. What this really does is get us a new, um, one new machine at the high school. It replaces an outdated machine that's been, um, in the teacher's lounge at the high school. So it would get us an updated machine. They're top of the line. Um, and then it kind of reduced costs for per, um, impression costs, uh, lower than what we have in our current contract right now. That's where we'd see a lot of the savings is the, uh, the cost per impression, uh, for printouts, copies, faxes, all that kind of stuff.
So to go off of that, Adam, what are we looking at? Is it a new unit for the high school teacher's room? The superintendent office, East Meadows teacher room? So three new units?
Uh, I, I have to double check on the amount. I, I think it's definitely one at the high school. I, I don't know if it's two more, but I, I can double check and, um, get you guys that answer.
I'm just, I'm just in the document right now. It has a little table. I was just making sure that it was those, it looks like there's those three.
Yep. But again, most of our machines have been, um, have been updated to their most current models in the current contract that we're in right now.
So, um, we're speaking about a document, but the document that we're looking at, um, is showing three new, it says new. Uh, one says keep and two say nothing. I'm assuming they will stay as well. Is that correct? The ones listed for that configuration session? So, um, those, uh, six machines, six copiers, they're all covered in this cost that they are proposing?
Correct.
Okay. Because we're going by the number copied anyway, I'm assuming that's what it is, right?
Yeah, we, we pay a lease for the actual machines, but you know, most of our cost comes from, you know, the amount of copying and, and, um, printing that we do.
Okay. So what is, what is that cost roughly for us?
Um, in total, it would be about with the lease of the machines and a, and, um, a projection for impressions, copies, prints, it'd be about $22,000.
So.
Currently, currently we're paying about $33,000. Um, now those prices for impressions, copies, prints are gonna, are gonna fluctuate. Obviously, we have less people in the building now, so less copies being made. Um, so again, they're, they're pretty high level projections, but we will save a, a significant amount of money, um, entering into the new, the new agreement.
So it was 33,000 because we're looking at the annual contract before?
Correct. Yep, correct.
Now we're switching to monthly, which is reduced compared to last year's monthly, about a thousand.
Well, we're in monthly, we, it was, sorry. So the, the current contract we're in is a monthly contract as well. So we play, we pay a lease amount for the machines and then we get charged monthly, um, monthly cost for impressions, copies. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So.
And the, the current agreement that we're in ends in February. So this would just be eliminating that agreement, um, immediately and entering into this, this new one prior to having to wait till February.
Okay. Um, I did not know the composition or, you know, how many of, whatever kind of, uh, print we are, uh, making. So now hearing the magnitude of this number, uh, which may be right, I don't know. Did we, when was the last time we did an audit to see how we are using these machines, whether or not we are doing what we could to, to preserve, to reduce the number of, uh, paper? Uh, used, obviously, you know, this is cost of, I don't know if paper is included in here, but you know, this is cost of printing, but you know, there is paper usage. Do you know whether or not there was a recent audit and, um, where we stand with that?
I do have all that information and we can, we can certainly, um, I can certainly send it out. You guys can take a look at it. I don't know how you, you want to look at that. But in the, in our new contract, and I, I wish David was here, but he's dealing with some personal things tonight. So, um, I can have him follow up with you too, because he, he's the, the copier guru. Um, you know, he handled this prior to me getting here. So. But the new contract would, um, there'd be some new software, um, that would accompany the machines that would allow us to track. Um, you know, what teachers, what employees are printing, where they're printing, how much they're printing. Um, so there's some new technology embedded into the machines that we'll get that will, um, allow us to better track, uh, the usage.
Okay. And, you know, I don't want to hog this one, but the, 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 the reason why I'm asking is this. One is the preservation uh, side, uh, you know, are we, are we doing our share to reduce the use of paper, ink and all that? Related to the cost that may help us reduce some of the costs because, as you mentioned, there is a fixed cost for the machines, but a good chunk of the total cost is based on the number of, uh, pages copied or printed.
Correct.
So given that we have, uh, these, uh, laptops, uh, you know, the Chromebooks and all that. I'm wondering whether or not we'll look at opportunities to be able to reduce the number of pages printed. Um, and if so, what, what that is. This year, I'm assuming the numbers are going to be low, given that we don't have everybody in the school and all that. I don't know if, uh, we're going to print as much as we normally do. But it would be a good exercise to really have those numbers along with this contract so that the school committee can see what we are doing to, again, reduce if, if possible at all.
Sure. So I can, I can certainly include, um, the numbers. I did receive numbers from, uh, Xerox, what we used last year. Again, uh, you know, that was through June 30th. For six months, we weren't in the schools. So those numbers aren't going to be, um, all telling. Um, but, but I can certainly share that information with the committee.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
I do. Um, so the way that this works, we don't pay pro, like separately for ink. It's included and we pay per page of what is printed.
Correct. We're paying a, um, a fixed cost for the machines and then a cost per impression on top of that on a monthly basis.
Okay. And, but they've given a predictive, what they think we're going to print, correct?
Yeah, we're, we're, yeah, it's, it's a, again, it's a projection, um, based on our numbers from last year, based on, um, the circumstances. This year, it's, it's a, it's a very high level, um, projection. So the, the fixed cost of the machines won't change. Um, it's really the, the amount of impressions, uh, per year that, that's going to, you know, fluctuate, um, more.
So if we were to go up or down and be higher or lower, is there like a corrective or?
Yeah, we could certainly, you know, this, this really what I was doing.
I'm just curious how it works, you know, is from that.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, so it's, it's one of those things where we have a really good relationship with, um, Patrick, who's our rep at CBS Xerox. So it's certainly because of the situation that we're in, um, i- this will be an ongoing conversation throughout the, you know, the life of, of this contract. Obviously, at whatever point we get to full capacity back in the schools and everyone's there and teachers are all there, obviously, the cost is going to increase. Um, and that'll be a conversation that we can have at that time. So it's, it's a pretty, it's a pretty fluid conversation with them. Um, a- all I was really trying to do was just get us out of our current contract. Um, where we're paying a, a little more and getting us into a new agreement so we can just realize some, um, savings right now.
Right. Cause the difference is quite a bit. I mean.
It's quite a bit. Thousand dollars a month for the fixed cost alone.
Hmm.
Thank you for that, Adam.
Yes, thank you, Adam.
Yep, you're welcome. You're welcome.
Okay. There are no other questions. We will move to our continuing business, starting with the reopening planning process. Carol? You're on mute.
So you asked, um, for me to talk a little bit about the, you know, the governor's orders and, um, the impacts. So, um, the Health and Safety Committee, um, reviewed the governor's press conference. And they reviewed all of the orders by the governor as part of our meeting on Thursday, November 12th. So, um, we started with the new metric. So Dick Bombardier reviewed the new COVID-19 metric that focuses on communities with a population under 10,000 residents. Under the new metric, um, Granby is gray, noting 10 or fewer cases. Um, the Board of Health, uh, will continue to monitor, um, the uptick in cases in Granby and keep the Granby Public Schools informed of not only the data, but the information of the cases and how it impacts. So the new metric, if, um, none of you have seen it, um, less than or equal to 10 cases, we, you're in gray. Um, green is less than 15, yellow is less than 25, and red is more than 25. So in the previous metric, um, we, we never got to green. We always went from gray to yellow because the number was four and then, you know, um, less than four or over, um, six. So we never got to green, um, whereas now we are with 10 cases, we're in gray, which, um, you know, is considered, you know, we're in a healthy state for in-person learning. And that we should, you know, um, continue to have our students coming into the building for learning. Um, I do have to say, um, that, you know, we have had, you know, an uptick of cases, you know, so the Board of Health has been watching that and keeping, keeping us informed. Um, and, you know, if it's, uh, going to impact the schools. Does anyone have any questions about the new metric?
Are you, you're just talking?
I was saying that, uh, you know, uh, since I'm prone to making comments about government policy, uh, this is not going to be the first. Uh, you know, I, it really struck me as interesting, uh, at least at two levels. One is you have a metric and then you're shifting the metric in the middle of the road. Um, not necessarily explaining what that means, but saying, hey, you know, if you don't, you don't hit these numbers, now your colors changed and everything changed. Previous week, you know, you were in danger. This week, even with, uh, more, uh, cases, you may be considered, you know, a safe haven. Uh, the other thing is, uh, it seems to me that the way they announce these policies, um, sometimes raises more questions. And one of the questions that raised in my mind was the same day they were instituting new curfews and restrictions and you can't even walk the streets with masks. Uh, you know, they were changing the metrics again without explanation so that people would feel a certain level of comfort. As far as why, you know, the num, the colors may not be looking bad, but we still have to make sure that we protect ourselves and others around us. Uh, so the, the, you know, the nonchalant way they, they announced those, hey, you know, we came up with these new policies, uh, was really striking to me. Otherwise, I do appreciate the fact that there is concern about the fact that we are in the middle of a major surge, which actually exceeds where we were even before, when we, the whole thing first started. And we have to be vigilant and we have to watch out for it. It's just that, you know, the mixed messages is making it difficult for the public, but also for institutions like schools where, you know, everything is hanging on, on the, on, on the balance. Just, you know, anything can change at any moment. And, uh, that wasn't easy to follow for me. So I just wanted to add that as a comment.
So I know that, you know, Dick, when he would give us information, he always broke it down. So, um, you know, he's looking more at community spread. Many of our cases have been all family related. So our high numbers, the last round were three, three families and what, you know, um, and so it was all in one like cluster. So he, instead of calling them individuals where it was nine cases, he basically said that was three incidents, which is similar, you know, to what he always gave us a different color than they were giving us because he separated that information out. Um, and he's looking at it, how it's in, what its impact is to the schools. Um, so we are, we, we have had some uptick. He is concerned. And he's, you know, continuing to keep, keep us informed. So, I mean, that's the one thing, you know, like, we're not relying just on the, on the data. We're, we're focused on the information about the data. And so, you know, prior to these cases that are coming now, it was clustered. And now it's, it's a little more diverse. So he's keeping us informed and, um, you know, um, will be directing us on, on how to go.
Yeah. And I for one, and I'm sure everybody feels the same way. I really appreciate it. I can't imagine that, uh, it is easy to stay on top. And I also know that, you know, the, you know, Dick, Dick Bombardier, who's the chair of the Board of Health, uh, and the other, uh, two members of the Board, Board of Health, they feel the burden of their responsibility because this is really something that they probably did not expect to become part of their, you know, their work. Uh, so a lot is going into that. So really appreciate it.
Yep. So the, the next order we've focused on was the mask break, which you just mentioned, um, mentioned briefly, you know, about how there's a mask requirement indoors, outdoors, whether you're six feet or, or not. So the Board of Health, we, we went back and forth, um, in a previous, um, meeting with the Health and Safety about safe mask breaks. And, um, the Board of Health has taken a hard stand on mask, on the mask break policy. And, um, we have determined, and I took this straight from them. Uh, we have determined that this policy of taking breaks from wearing masks while indoors, other than for eating and drinking, is not permitted. We have reviewed the DESI guidance and believe that our position is supported within it. And regardless, the board would have rejected this policy as taking an unacceptable, high risk, even if not supported by the Department of Education. So with that, we have notified, um, the schools that, um, indoor mask breaks, other than for eating or drinking, will not happen in, in the classrooms. Um, um, mask breaks would happen outside. So, um, they will have snack indoors, quiet activities, no talking, eat your snack, then put your mask back on. Um, but any other mask breaks will happen outside of the school. So we're, we're following that as soon as they voted that, I believe, last Tuesday. So we're, we're following that. As soon as they voted that, I believe last Tuesday, both schools were notified. Um, the high school already only has it during, um, break and lunch already. And, um, uh, at the elementary, they'll do an outdoor afternoon break. So.
I have a quick question about lunch. Um, I know that they were, Board of Health was really concerned about even the kids eating with their masks off. Are, were they expecting a silent lunch? Or how are we approaching that? I mean, I'm just thinking like kids are kids and they're gonna be eating in.
Yeah, everyone is six feet apart and they're all facing the same direction. So there is no kids that are facing each other. They're all facing the same direction. The person to their, to their left or right, depending on where they are, are six feet away from them and to their side. So if they're talking, they're talking, they're eating, they're not directly across from each other where, where they're sharing breaths.
Thank you. That's just important to know because I don't want it to sound like super depressing, like they have to be completely silent during those times. They are safely distanced, so they're gonna be able to still, okay.
I mean, there, there's a little, you know, at the high school every now and then, you, you know, they'll be yelling to the guy down the end, you know? But it's, um, yeah, we're trying, we're trying to make every opportunity for social still be social, you know, so.
I'm wondering if there will be any new challenges coming when the weather gets cold? Because you just mentioned that, you know, the mask break will be outside. Uh, we're still able to go, you know, outside for, you know, short period of time and, you know, it's all good. Somebody mentioned 18 degrees tomorrow morning. I mean, when it starts getting very, very cold, I'm wondering what, what that may, you know, uh, lead to.
Well, right now, as I said, the high school's only taking their two breaks during break. Um, you know, there's, you know, they have the little courtyard. I mean, they could very easily just, you know, but we're heading into the courtyard and walk through the courtyard and, you know, and pull your mask down, you know, and have that be a, you know, a break. Um, just to walk out the front door and around and come in the side door. I mean, you know, it doesn't have, they don't have to be out for long periods of time. Um, you know, but just enough to get out, take your mask down, walk around the building and come back in. I mean, they don't typically go out of the building, um, unless it's 24 degrees or warmer. Um, but if, if, if there's a need for, um, you know, an additional mask break, you know, I think a walk right out the door and in the side door is not, you know, they're not gonna, we're not leaving them out there for long periods of time. We're talking a five-minute walk around.
Yep. So.
As you do say that though, Emery, it makes me think of, you know, here we have windows open for ventilation and we know from when we went into the building, there are seats right next to the windows. So, you know, is, that is concerning to me of what are we doing on these days where it's 18 degrees? Are the kids wearing their coats in the classroom? Like what are we, are we preparing parents that it is a certain temperature in the classroom, that they should make sure they bring sweatshirts, layers? I, I think there needs to be some open communication there.
We can certainly ask, we can certainly have Bill and Stephen send home, you know, information as the weather gets colder, you know, to make sure, you know, you're bringing a sweatshirt. I mean, we, the, you know, so far, I mean, we'll know tomorrow. You know, tomorrow will be like the test day. If it's gonna be 18 degrees in the morning.
Tomorrow's Wednesday though, so it's full remote for everybody, right?
Right, but we'll be in the building, so we'll be able to gauge.
Oh, we don't care about that, Carol.
Thanks, Emery.
No, I'm just saying as far as being able to take the temperature of some of the classrooms, you know, we certainly can.
Yeah, no, that would be great, actually. Maybe be better, right? Just, you know, when the kids aren't out there.
I mean, yeah, well, it's gonna be lower when the kids aren't there. The more bodies you put in, the temperature, you know, room is gonna change. You know, if you're the only person in the room, it's gonna be freezing. But if you put, you know, a bunch of bodies in there, it is gonna go up.
But there's not that many bodies right now in there and the little ones are so little. So they don't give off as much heat.
Right.
You know, it's always funny to hear that you may need a coat in a classroom, especially at the high school. I remember my son wearing a T-shirt every day. I mean, whether it was freezing or, you know, warm, because it was warm in the, in the building.
Yeah. Well, it depends on, it depends on which room you're, you're in. You know, there, there are, you know, certain rooms that are very warm and then there's, you know, the rooms where it's colder.
And when I was a kid, it was always freezing in there and we wore jackets pretty much year round. Yeah.
All right. Okay. So the next, um, the committee also, you know, reviewed the governor's press conference pushing for more in-person learning, stating that students can learn safely in schools. So, um, taking all of that information into consideration, the Health and Safety Committee has made a recommendation to the school committee, which was in your packet. Um, and, you know, we're, did everyone get a chance to see that recommendation?
Yes, just a quick question, not to drill on this one. The previous topic, is there any action that needs to be taken by the, uh, school committee? Are we covered with what we already have in our, with respect to mask and breaks?
So we did, um, a, um, like a mask, um, like protocol that we, mask break prot, protocol that we sent out to the teachers. So they all, you know, they know that mask breaks only occur. And I believe it's in, it's also in the reopening plan under the Health and Safety section. We put that right in there, um, red. And, um, we can also, um, send it out in the, the weekly notices that both Stephen and Bill send to families. So we can make sure it's in there as well.
I think it's important. I mean, it's, especially if we're gonna tell them, hey, bring your coat or sweater and then it's not really explained that way.
Yeah, we'll do both. We'll do something about the mask breaks as well as, you know, the temperature. So I'll make sure that both Stephen and, um, Bill add that to their weekly notice, notices that go out on Friday.
Alright, sorry.
No problem. So in your packet, um, there, you should have received a recommendation, um, from the Health and Safety Committee. So I don't know if there's any questions.
Could you please, uh, is it possible to kind of go through the recommendation for everyone's benefit?
Sure. So at the, I'll ju, I'll read it. At the November 12th Health and Safety Committee, Dick Bombardier, Board of Health representative, shared his concern regarding the recent uptick in COVID-19 positive cases in Massachusetts. He noted that Granby has also seen an uptick due to Halloween gatherings and voiced his concern that these, that this trend may continue, knowing that we are approaching the Thanksgiving holiday break. As a result of the uptick of COVID-19 cases in the community, the Health and Safety Committee felt that the East Meadow School should delay the return of the second grade cohort scheduled to return on Monday, November 30th. The committee recommends that the second grade cohort return to in-person learning on Monday, December 7th, which is the following Monday, 2020, which will align East Meadow with the next cohort of Granby Junior Senior High School students returning for in-person learning. Understanding that this change will have a ripple effect on the subsequent phasing in of grades at East Meadow, the committee also recommends that the third grade cohort phase in with second grade on December 7th. Um, I've put down on the bottom of the, um, a memo just for your reference, where we are currently with the, with the phases.
Was it a one pager, by the way, just to confirm? Okay, cause it looks like there may be something else and I downloaded and then you can't read it when you download it and open it.
Yeah, no. So currently we're at phase four. Was scheduled for November 30th, which would have brought in grade two. Grade five, phase five would be three weeks later. So with us moving to December 7th, that means that, um, phase five would fall on December 21st, which doesn't really make sense to bring kids in for two days and then we have, you know, the holiday break. So it actually would end up pushing third and fourth grade till after, um, the winter break. Um, so we thought, you know, we could get them in with second grade. So that's, you know.
A question.
Sure.
I mean, if we're looking to alternate phasing, I just, I, I guess, I mean, I can't believe I'm even the one saying this, but if we're the, if we wanna phase in separately, I would say maybe not have the length of time be so long. And maybe, I'm just not sure that having everybody come back at the same time makes the most sense, considering all of these upticks and everything. I would think maybe it would be like December 7th and then December 14th, like, uh, you know, two different weeks instead of, instead of having a large group come in. Um, but then I'm also even, you know, the December 21st date seems, I, I, I don't even know. So we're saying that that wouldn't happen regardless. It would either be December 7th or after the new year?
No, what I was, I was reading what our original phasing was, and by, if by moving second grade, the, you know, that phasing off a week, it has a ripple effect. So it ends up, instead of us bringing in the next cohort the week before, you know, on the 14th, and not, not the 14th, yeah, on the 14th, that's would have been the week that we would have brought third and fourth grade in. But because we're not gonna bring second grade in on the 30th, it pushes it to the 21st, which makes it seem we, not, not a good idea to bring them in on the, on the 21st, when you can only bring in one cohort. So.
I'm just not, I mean, is it an all or nothing proposition? It's either the seventh and the.
I mean, as, as the school committee, as the school committee, you have, you have control. So.
I mean, I, I just, you know, if we're worried about, um, what the Board of Health is worried about, I'm, um, I guess I have a number of questions swirling in my head. What, what makes us go back to remote? We have to be red on the new metric or the Board of Health says we're going to be red and we have to go remote? But what is the trigger point?
So the new metric, yes, you're supposed to be, we're supposed to be red. But I do believe that it's also local control. And if the, if the Board of Health feels, you know, that the, that it's a community spread, they may, you know, direct us to do this for the safety of the community. And that is, um, within the, the local control. It is my understanding.
As I understand it also, it is ultimately the Board of Health that gets to decide. Um, cause a lot of towns are starting to pull back right now. Again, even if they are not yet in the red, they're trying to preventively not get in the red.
Well, I think it makes a lot of sense. I mean, just based on even like what Steve Griffin was saying earlier, you know, not having someone come to start on the 30th makes a lot of sense because you wanna kind of have that chance for anything to bubble up or bloom, whatever the appropriate phrase is for the nastiness to start, you know, like I, I, it wouldn't make sense to have someone start right after the break. So then even looking at our, our going forward plans, it doesn't make sense to have some new kids starting right away on that, um, in January, right after the break because, you know, there's so many different ways to look at it now.
Right. Right.
But, you know, I guess looking at it, I don't know. And it goes against everything that I've been saying right along, but I don't know that I want a whole big group of kids coming back at the same time. But I'm not opposed to a week, a week of separation, like December 7th and then the 14th. Um, then would say, I think I wanna alternate, uh, not alternate, um, alter dates on the flip side because I think like Steve Griffin made a really good point. Like you don't wanna have people coming back after a break where they're possibly seeing more people. And it's not just the students, it's the teachers too, just everybody trying to do that. So I'm, um, I'm all over the place on this, but it's.
Oh, I have a question. So sorry to Jen, but you seem like you're. So I, can I jump in?
You're fine.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So we don't want the next group to phase in because it's after the holidays, but are other kids that are already phased in are still gonna be there? We just don't wanna add another group in yet on the scheduled date? Is that what I'm gathering? I just wanna make sure I'm understanding this correctly.
So, so the Board of Health is watching the uptick. And they are concerned about the week after Thanksgiving. And so when they, when they found out that we were adding more kids after Thanksgiving, you know, they said that they didn't feel that that was a good idea. Um, I don't, you know, as I said, they, they're worried. They're worried about the week after Thanksgiving because of what happened after Halloween.
But did they say that we can not just not bring in any new kids? Or like Audrey's saying, should no kids be back the week after Thanksgiving and be like remote that week after or whatever? Cause that's what I'm seeing. Some schools are starting to.
They, they have a meeting on, um, it's my understanding that they have a meeting on the 24th. Um, and I believe, Stephanie, if I'm correct, the Health and Safety Committee has a meeting also on the 24th. Um, so, I mean, a decision could be made on the 24th, you know, if, if things continue um, to uptick and the Board of Health may say it's not safe. Um, but, you know, they're not making that, they're not gonna make that decision in advance. They're going to wait to see what the data tells them.
So on that same notion then, if we're seeing an uptick and we're nervous and we're watching it, doesn't it seem a little ridiculous then to put more kids in when we're like, oh, okay? Like, I don't know.
That's, that's why we put, that's why they did not want it to be on that week. You know, that was the, you know, they were worried about that week.
Right, but to wait one more week and to try to phase in twice as many kids. Do you know what I mean? It, it still seems like.
Well, you have two, you have two parts there. You have the first part where it's delay second grade and then consider adding third grade. So if you do it in separate, separate, you can say, okay, we're, where you agree to delay second grade because we don't want them to come in on the 30th because of, of the concern. And then you may say third grade in another week, or you may say, no, no third grade, let's wait and see, you know? I mean, as it stands right now with the ripple, if, if second grade comes in, based on the current phasing, if second grade comes in on the 7th, then the next group wouldn't come in until the 21st. And I don't think the 21st is a good date. So they wouldn't start till after in January. So.
Two, two qu, questions, just to clarify, uh, for myself. Um, our original phasing in did not have second and third grade coming in on the same day, correct?
No.
Uh, and when are we starting our, um, holiday break?
20, I believe it's the 23rd. So the 21st.
21st was completely. It was a date, but it didn't really make much sense, you know, bringing everybody for two days.
It only, it only became a date because we're moving, we, we moved it to the 7th.
We had a, we had originally started earlier, Emery, in our original plan. It's because we got bumped back to begin with. So nobody ever really was like, oh yeah, we should phase in on the 21st.
New date of 21st, uh, but yeah, thank you for, for that. Um, so if it didn't, if it did not make sense, just to reflect on what I'm hearing, if it did not make sense to have second and third grade come in on the same date, I'm not sure it makes sense to have them come in on the same date, especially given the concern that Board of Health is raising. Uh, and, and have so many, so many students, so many kids coming in. Uh, because it's the learning for the students, but also for those who are in the building, the teachers and everybody else. It's just, it causes a lot more uh, concern and issues. Uh, so that the, I guess the question to be answered at that point is. Uh, so that, the, I guess the question to be answered at that point is. If we're not gonna do it on the seventh. Are we doing it the week after for only a week or so, or, you know, ten days, whatever it may be? Uh, or are we just, you know, thinking, uh, hey, let's just wait it out until uh, January? That it seems to be the options that we talked about, is that correct?
So, so are, can we break it apart and say, can we focus on second grade first?
Yeah, that would be great, actually.
Okay, so second grade was supposed to come in on the thirtieth, we're pushing it to the seventh. So are, are you comfortable with that or is that not comfortable either?
From what I'm understanding, it's really not a matter if we're comfortable or not, the Board of Health is saying that we need to do this, right? So it's, I mean, I guess we have to maybe do a rubber stand.
Are you comfortable with them coming in on the seventh?
At all, that's, I think that's what Carol's asking, just, you know. So what you're saying is correct, Jen, that Board of Health doesn't want them to be back on the original date of thirtieth. But I guess Carol is asking, is the seventh okay then from a, from the school committee's perspective?
Oh, oh, okay, I, yeah, I was misunderstanding, I was like, I, I. I think if the Board of Health is okay with that, that date as being the next available date, then I don't. I personally don't have a problem with them coming in on the seventh, because then at least they have some time to be exposed to the routine before, so when they come back. After the break, it's, you know, they can start right in.
The only thing I was gonna add in is just, are you looking for a vote from us, Carol?
Well, Emery said, said it's more of a, an approval.
Okay, cause I mean, I feel like.
Or a vote, either way, it's basically, I, you know, remember our conversation last time, just, I. Yeah, based on our agreement early on, uh, when we first started this process. I really appreciate this, this is coming to the school committee for a conversation and then, you know, approval.
I do as well, but obviously if the Board of Health is not comfortable, then we pretty much have no choice anyway, so it's good to have the heads up, but I, you know, it's. Kind of a non-discussion, it is a discussion, definitely, but at the same time, it's. Ultimately up to them, you know, it's their choice.
I think right now, though, we're trying to focus in on, are we comfortable with just putting grade two on December seventh?
Yes.
And with that, I, I am.
So let's just, let's just, you know, uh, even if it's not a vote, if you want, we can vote too, are we all good with December seventh day for? Uh, grade two only?
Yes.
Okay, we're all good. So now you wanna discuss the grade three issue?
If, when you look at the phases, after grade two, we, we double upgrades. So Jen, you were asking that, so phase five is grades three and four. And phase six, three weeks later, is grades five and six. So, you know, those are larger groups, so I was just saying, you know, like to get, you know, the third graders in. You know, but I understand your concern about, you know, large numbers, you know, with everything happening.
Second grade is also our biggest group, correct?
Second grade is, yes.
Which was why we didn't group them together initially, because it was such a large group of people. So, well, I kinda remember that discussion distinctly, because we were like, we, we could do. We wanted the pre-k's to go in by themselves, but then we had talked about doing K and one together. Because two was always gonna, cause one and two would be too much and two and three would be too much, so it was, I feel like, you know, we, we had. Mounds of discussion about that and that would be something else, I mean, grade two is our biggest group. Um, I know that there's a group, or I, I think I know, I don't really know much of, I'm not remembering. Also, an all remote group um for two.
Yeah.
Also, like a whole, a whole cohort of that.
I believe so, yes.
So I feel like we had, we had break, broken out grade two separately, like Audrey said, because it was our largest group. So that, and then with adjusting and everything, it feels. Now to go back to have grade three come in with them. And they're not a particularly small group, they're not a bigger group, I mean, they're not a huge group, but they're also not like one of the smaller groups. It's, you know, it's another larger group, right?
Yeah.
So is it fair to say that we are, we really think that second grade should come in by itself on, on the seventh? So what that leaves us with, since we uh, all seem to have agreed that the twenty first is not really a reasonable date. What we're, what we're asking ourselves is whether or not we should uh, have the third grade in on the fourteenth. Or in January, that's basically what we're asking, is that correct?
Yep.
So I guess my big thing, I'm looking at the calendar right now. Is first of all, that would be our closest gap of only doing a week apart. But with that being said, that gives those kids only potentially two. If you're in the Monday, Tuesday cohort, they'll have four days going in at the fourteenth. If you're in the Thursday, Friday, they're only going in twice before break. So is this worse, that risk of them only going in two to four days, depending on their cohort? When we know that numbers are ticking up and it's only a week apart?
Well, the other, the other option is in Jan, so in Jan, January, just like Jen had said. You know, do we wanna do the week right after? Probably not, so we could look at January eleventh. For three and four, and then January twenty fifth for five and six. And then that way there, we would get, by then, they would have, um. They would have all of the grades in by, before February, you know, by the end of June, January.
I'm having a hard time and I understand that parents and kids and everybody really wants to be in, I get it. But I have a hard time, like, bulking up the numbers, shrinking the weeks. In the middle of like cold and flu season, like it just seems.
Well, no, we're not.
Not only that, just the major uptick.
Right, right, so like to then be like, okay, two grades at a time and two weeks apart, like it just, it seems. I'm having a hard time.
Yeah. Here's, here's my other thing, I mean, we're just looking at the schools. With the kids that have to take the bus, that's gonna be a whole new experience. And to only have them have a week before another group comes in. That's, especially being that young, it's gonna take them a while to adjust to their new routine. Of being on a bus and then getting to the school, cause that's gonna be a whole new experience, that's gonna take a while. And I think trying to crush them together. That's, that's a lot, I, I, for the students, but it's also a lot for everyone else involved.
So the, the original plan had three and four going in together and five and six. So that was already from the beginning plan, had, had those groups together. So it's not, I'm not pushing them together, I'm just saying they were together um already.
I just think, once again, looking at the calendar, if we brought in grade three on the fourteenth. Cohort B is only going in that Thursday, Friday, and then they don't go back for three full weeks.
Right.
That's also.
I, 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 I agree.
So I really liked when Carolyn mentioned bringing in three and four on the, uh, January eleventh and five, six on January twenty.
Okay, so maybe we can make it uh, a quicker decision then. Uh, it seems to me that we are, we already said December seventh for grade two, they're coming in. Uh, we are uh, pushing uh, third grade coming in into January with uh, fourth grade. Is that what we're saying?
I don't know, you gotta ask them.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm doing, just is that.
I don't, it is what it is, but I'm just gonna say it, I'm not as anti-kids not coming in right before the holiday, I, I see it too. I don't know, but at the same time. Now I'm in the wrong month again, hang on, um. Because the next opportunity would be the twenty first to bring them in, so they'd only be coming in two days, so it'd be half of their class. Would get to come in and the other not.
Exactly, the other half would not come in at all. So, um.
The next soonest date.
Is the eleventh.
Eleven.
Cause we can't do the fourth, because that would be the week after.
And I'm feeling like, you know, are we even going to be allowed to have any kids go back this week of the fourth? Like it might be, that might be a full remote week for the entire district, because if like other places are saying. And we, that's right after the holidays, you might need to make sure that everybody's good, whether it's students or teachers or staff or whatever, like. You know, I'm seeing a lot of places are doing that, that's right after the holiday. Like even at my work today, they're saying if you, if you travel for Thanksgiving, you're working remote the following, you know. For the following week, or unless you can prove, um, provide a negative test, but even then they're saying, we'd rather you just not come in. Because you might be tested too soon and have a false, uh, false, uh, negative. So, I mean, I don't know that we can make decisions that far in advance, but time is starting to feel like really, um. Really crunched.
Right. Yeah, so it's not really, I, I, you're making a good point. Um, we're not necessarily making a decision and trying to foresee what may happen in January. Uh, but I guess what we're trying to uh, have a feel for is whether or not. Um, we have any reasonable date, we can bring the third grade in in December. And based on this conversation, it seems like one week apart from second grade is not, doesn't make sense. Even if they do come that day, some of them will only be in this school for three days, is it really worth? Um, that, that, that's where we left it off, so that's why I asked the question the way I asked it. If we're saying December. Now I got.
Seven.
Fourth, December fourth was for second grade.
No, seven.
Okay, December seventh was for uh, uh, for second grade. Okay, thank you. And so now we are saying, um. Let's just not do third grade in December and just move it to January. And we will at the same time have the benefit of the Safety Committee meeting and, you know, uh, monitoring and making recommendations. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So can we, i- if everybody's comfortable with that, I know this is not the easiest decision to make, we are, as Audrey said. You know, there are, and Carol said it uh, several times, so there are families who, you know, who've been waiting and, you know, students who've been waiting. But based on the numbers that we'll put out there, that even if students were to come in, the third grade I'm talking about. There is an adjustment in the bus and expo, exposing uh, in the bus, uh, which Jen mentioned. Then they're gonna come in for two, three days, because they can't all come in every day, uh, based on our current structure. Is it really, is it really worth the potential risk based on what the Board of Health is indicating? So I guess the question I'm asking is, are we good pushing third grade to January?
I think so.
Okay, everybody else? I, I'm, I'm in favor of that. Audrey?
It makes me so, but at the same time, it's, I feel like.
I think it's the same for all of us, I mean, we had a plan and if everything had gone accordingly, you're absolutely right. It's, it's not an easy decision or a comfy decision, but uh, you know, a decision that we need to make one way or the other. Jen Mallett, how are you feeling? Good with Ja- January? Okay, Audrey?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Stephanie and. You, you both, okay, all right, so I guess that's what we're doing.
Okay, so, December seventh for second grade. Third and fourth, January.
Same, same time, is that what you're saying?
Third and fourth are going, yes, I mean, that's what the phases say, that, you know.
So that would be January eleventh.
January eleventh, is that, is people okay with that? Cause it would be nice for us to at least be able to say to parents, you know, that. The next cohort would come in on January eleventh so they can prepare.
Yes, I'm, I'm personally comfortable with that, I don't know if anybody else has any questions or concerns.
I'm comfortable with that, as long as you also just make sure to reiterate that we're also going to be continuing to check the metrics. Just so that people get to.
Yeah.
Cut up in the eleventh, because we just don't know what Board of Health is going to do, let alone the state or town.
Right.
Sounds good.
Okay, all right, beautiful.
All right.
Do we need to say how far after for fourth and, uh, fifth and sixth?
We mentioned the twenty, the twenty fifth, which is, what is that, two weeks? It gets them in January rather than February. So. I mean, you, we have a couple more school committee meetings before that, so.
Yeah, I think as is. We can talk about that later if anything changes.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean. What?
Go ahead, sorry. I wanted to know if these changes from the Board of Health then um, affects the high school phasing in plan. Cause I still really don't have a good handle on what the high school phasing in plan is, because there's not really dates itemized out, it's just always been groups. And then we went with seventh grade and eighth grade is supposed to be coming at some point, so I'd like to see an updated schedule for that as well.
So that, you should have information, cause that's the next thing on the agenda?
Oh, okay, I didn't.
You're, you're supposed to, you're gonna be getting an update from both East Meadow and the high school.
Look at that, it's like I'm uh, right on top of things.
It wasn't there until you asked, Jen.
Okay, cause I didn't see.
It's now there magically.
Magically, okay. Awesome, okay, so I know, I, I, I'm good with where we're at, December seventh, January eleventh. And now I'm gonna turn it over to, um. We'll start with, um, it says Granby Junior Senior High School, so Steven's up.
Carol, uh, thank you for leading that conversation.
You're welcome.
Hey, everybody, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Are you wearing a tie?
Yeah, I am.
You are?
Yeah.
Well, thank you for that, just, you know, it's been a while.
I haven't had a chance to change, so I figured, might as well look apart, right? Um, so thank you, the last forty minutes, I think, gave us an idea of what we feel like sometimes trying to plan this out. And there's so many iterations of every plan and so many moving parts and so many unknowns, so, um, you know. It, it is difficult, so I appreciate you guys working through that. Um, couple of things about the junior senior high school, I wanna start by um, acknowledging and apologizing. For not notifying you all about the shift in um, the plan for, to bring the seventh grade. I think each time we've brought a phase of students in, we've learned something new about it. And um, one thing we've learned in the first couple of phases, especially with some staff working remotely. Like it's really challenging at the middle school and high school with students having so mu- so much variety in their classes. To make sure that they're covered and supervised and everything throughout the day, so. As we talked as a student support team and we invited in our most vulnerable and highest need students. Um, you know, I think it was in the second phase that it really hit us that, I think we invited thirty six students in. And fifteen accepted, um, we said, you know, like that process isn't the most effective or efficient way. What other ways can we look at this? So the student support team, uh, along with Megan, who, thank you to Megan last week or two weeks ago. Uh, I think she did a good job and explained our thinking well. Um, said that, you know, in the seventh grade, we have a team of teachers, even though the students have some variety in their s- the schedule. We can bring in this team of teachers that will be responsible for this group of students throughout the two cohorts. Um, so that's the, the direction we started to move and, um. I think the timing of all of this is challenging, just thinking about the mask breaks. We updated our mask break policy and our reopening plan, I think a week ago last Friday. And then the Board of Health had a change to the mask break policy on Tuesday, so things are just shifting so much. Uh, I should have certainly sent a memo to you all and, um, I apologize for that, cause certainly not trying to keep anybody in the dark about this. Um, so, point well taken and, um, we'll be better about that moving forward. Um, so, I don't know if it makes sense to start with kind of the next phases or what we're thinking. Or we also made some adjustments to our reopening plan um, in the last week. Um, if you want me to start there, what works best for you all?
Perhaps just going down the document so we know we stay in order.
Which document?
We have a school committee presentation overview.
Perfect. So... I don't know if I'm on the same one. I have school committee presentation, the updated reopening plan, that one?
Um, we have so many in our folder this week. It's at the top, it says school committee presentation overview.
Yep, and then I think it's under, under that says agenda item, junior senior high school reopening plan?
Yes.
Yep, perfect, thank you. Um, so there were some things in the reopening plan that, you know, they've been just living there since, there was a line in it, for example, that, um, talked about our master schedule as it stood on July twenty-ninth in twenty-twenty. So things like that just hadn't been cleaned up. It's like, we just got moving so fast, and things got approved, so we went back through and cleaned up some of that, th- those parts of the plan, and then, um, we also realized there was nothing about the ventilation and the HEPA filters, and, um, updates the mask breaks, so we wanted to add that information in there, so it was in this, and I think Carol did a good job in July and August when she said these reopening plans are living documents, and they continue to change, and so, some changes were made last week, shared it out with the, um, reopening committee, so that they could review those changes before sending it, um, here. And, uh, we highlighted the changes in yellow, so people, um, can see them. Um, the mask policy, we talked a little bit about already tonight. Um...
As I'm going through the document myself, did the room occupancy numbers go up? I thought they were really small in the high school.
Yeah, so that's one of the biggest changes. It's not the room occupancy numbers went up, uh, in talking to Davey Engineering, um, the room occupancy is not, that has nothing to do with the ventilation or the HEPA filters. What they, um, are recommending, the HEPA filters is based on the, um, is based on the volume of the room. So, as long as we can maintain the physical distancing of six feet, they basically said, if you have eleven kids and two teachers, or twelve kids and a parent, a teacher, that doesn't make any difference to them in terms of running the HEPA filter at a hundred percent, having the window open. So, instead of it being maximum occupancy, it changed to a range. So, the range doesn't change the number of desks that we can fit in a room. Um, but for example, if, um, there were eleven desks and a teacher, eleven students and a teacher, and we had said maximum occupancy is twelve, and then I went in to do an observation, technically, we would have been over for something like that. So having the range, um, made some sense in that point, part, in that sense, because we're gonna be in and out of classrooms. Um, but the number of desks, uh, hasn't changed, because we maintained that six feet.
I appreciate the clarification, thank you.
Of course. That, and that, those are the things that, I mean, in June, July, and August, we never would have thought of. We just thought about how many desks you can fit, and then you start asking questions about, what about the paraprofessional, and what about the teacher, and what about the person that comes in from Willie Ross? And, you know, you start thinking of all these other people who could be in and out of the room, even if they might not be there for any prolonged periods. Um, so I think that is really one of the biggest changes to the document, is having that range, and also in- including the information about, uh, HEPA filters. Um, and as I said here, the HEPA filters are really based on the volume of the room. They don't have anything to do with the number of people in the room. Um, Davey has basically said, you know, it's our responsibility to make sure that the appropriate physical distancing is possible, um, and then the HEPA filter and the room, the window being open, um, that will do it, that will do its, um, its job. Um... So, office hours, so we did add office hours. So, one thing that we did this year was we designated specific days for specific classes on office hours, so you know, there's still, uh, there's still things where students might have to choose between one class or another, but to maintain, maintain some consistency, um, all of our office hours are spread out Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Um... The student support teams working to identify the in-person students, I think that's kind of been uh, a hallmark of this plan throughout, um, having that team process, the occupancy range we talked about.
Steve, Audrey has a question.
Um, actually, it's for you, Emery. So if you click the blue button where it says reopening plan, he's kind of going through the document.
Yeah, I was there, actually, that's why I shipped it out, but I, I can follow that one as easily as this one. If you help me, I would be happy to.
And I'm kind of going through, so I'm not seeing you guys or what Emery is sharing either.
Well, I have a few pictures of you guys on my desktop.
Sorry to hear that.
Um-
Did you, did, Carol, did they get our video? Did you guys get our video?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's not gonna win any Oscars, I keep saying.
We're gonna nominate you later, Steven.
It's functional.
Um, so, help me out where you are as I go to the reopening plan, because there were so many things highlighted, I did not know where you were.
Yeah, that makes sense, um...
I think you're right about there, Emery. He was just talking about office hours.
Cool, right there.
Yep.
Yeah. Um, so we just added those again for consistency, and so, parents and students could refer to it. Um, you know, we had talked about having one per day, there was a lot of conversation about this, but this is where we landed. Um, but this is where teachers are responsible for at least one office hour. Our teachers, um, typically, they're available for more than, more than the one, as long as, um, students are reaching out, communicating a need. Um... Page seven, we went over the occupancy. Some of this is redundant, Emery, so I'll give you a page number.
I'll direct with you, hold on. Okay, so, I'm going with, with the highlights, so. Next one was hybrid learning option two. Is this relevant to what you are gonna share? Student support team is right here.
Yep, I think we've already kind of gone through that.
Yep.
Yeah. Let's see, some of this stuff is redundant, so if you went down to page...
But what you just said doesn't match with that, because with the, the, it's not just identifying, um, individual kids now, we, we just identified the whole group, group of seventh grade and doing the whole group of eighth grade next, I thought, so shouldn't that be up- updated to reflect that?
You're talking about the cohorts?
Yeah, because it says one student support team has identified and invited the students most, um, but we're not doing that anymore, we're just doing by grades, I thought. Isn't that what he was saying?
One could argue that they are the most need.
And, yeah, and again, if you would like us to change the word, I, I think, yeah, we're saying the focus would shift to inviting additional students to in-person learning, and that's what we're doing. We're doing it by grade, but it's just inviting that next group of students.
My understanding too was, um, with seventh and eighth grade kind of being that next need, after eighth grade, it's not going to go like then ninth and tenth and eleventh, because classes are mixed, so we did say on November nineteenth was that forty-five day of like reevaluation, which is pretty much what this is, right, Steven?
Yeah, so, in November night, the forty-five days, I appreciate you bringing that up, that was, um, a school committee date that, um, you guys had mentioned reevaluating at forty-five days, and I think this is all coinciding with that. Um, so that wasn't part of a date that we put on there to mean anything specific, it was just a, a notation from that. But yes, Stephanie, in, in, in essence, that's what we're doing, we're, we've been reevaluating, I mean, daily, really, but...
Well, I guess, I will, I'll wait, but I just feel like at, I thought at some point we were going to have a schedule, like a phasing in schedule of grades for the high school, and I still don't think that we have that. You know, we're, we're talking about constantly with need, but, you know, we've got every grade and every student accounted for at East Meadow, but I, you know, I still don't have a clear understanding of when kids are going back in the high school, because it's either on need, or it's a whole grade that's brought in. So, um, Emery said that that was put in the folder, but I'm not sure if that, if you meant this document, Emery, or if there's something else that has more of a schedule that you saw.
Um, there was that memo that I was showing before, and I clicked on the link for the reopening plan, that's what I'm showing, I don't have anything else.
Yeah, and that, that really talked about, to, I think, Jen's point, that really talked about where we are with the phases currently, and what we're thinking in our next phase, and I'm happy to talk a little bit about the future phases, but I think, um, you know, like, you all just went through, it's, it's difficult to put anything in de- definitives, but, um, we can certainly talk through where our thinking is.
Steven, I don't wanna, I don't, um, I don't want to speak for Jen, but, um, if I'm not misunderstanding what you're saying, this is, this was also a conversation last time, that, uh, you know, we were, we've been referring to cohorts, and then the composition of that cohort changed somewhat. We were talking about needs, and then we started talking about, uh, grades. And based on all that shift, it's not as clear, I guess, to some of us, what that means, you know, what, which dates correspond to what grade necessarily, you know, when we're talking about those cohorts, what they mean. Uh, we keep on using them interchangeably, but is there a way to add a little more clarity? I guess that's what I, I, I'm wondering.
Sure, our current thinking is grade eight on December seventh, grade nine and ten sometime around January eleventh, and then grade eleven and twelve by the end of January first week in February, but again, for us, that depends on a lot of things, additional HEPA filters, so that, so again, like, that's where our thinking is, but, um, you know, I, I guess, I worry putting that in writing and people getting attached to that and having to make a change, but, um, that's, that's where our thinking is.
Well, I can tell you that, I mean, just having those dates out there feels better, because it feels like there's at least um, something that's a concrete plan where we haven't had that, and, you know, I don't think anyone expects any plan that we put in at this point at, um, to be in stone. We say, we've changed the East Meadow one, I think, seven times before, uh, you know, at this point, so I just feel like it's nice to have something that's out there, and it's, it's a target, whether or not we hit the target or not is, um, debatable, because there's so many factors outside of our control, but at least there is something that's kind of out there, so people can kind of have some, some dates in mind, something that you know where it is that you're at.
Yep, yep, that, no, that makes, that makes sense, and that, that, again, that's where our thinking is, um, and basically, the way that we've been running it is, like, yesterday, we brought in a, uh, the most recent phase of students, and we met today about the next phase, so basically, the phase in process has been about a three-week process, by the time we talk to the teachers, by the time we send invitations to the parents, work with the bus company, set up the lunches, um, all that, so um, I think one thing our reopening committee was really clear about, in our recommendations, was that we wanted to smart, start small and go slow, and I think we've done that. I think, obviously, having to move to East Meadow for three weeks, and the HEPA filters, that was not something any of us, um, had anticipated, but I think that's been helpful in our learning. Um, and then, you know, a- as we talk about seventh grade in this week, and eighth grade hopefully in, um, around that December seventh date, you know, I think those for us are easy in some ways. The high school becomes a whole new challenge, because of the number of students, the nu- the number of different places they would be, the number of lunches we'd have to go to. Um, so that, those are the things that we're starting to talk about now, but, um, yeah, that's, I mean, that would be ideal, um, if everything went well, HEPA filters were in, the numbers kind of leveled off a bit, things like that. Get the approval from, uh, Board of Health and School Committee. Um, I think that would be an ideal situation, that, you know, we'd have everybody back right around the start of the second semester in the cohorts.
I also really like the idea of East Meadow and the high school being on that same page for January, like, that's a nice cohesive, kind of tie that all together.
Yeah.
Um, are you, do we have, I know that you guys did a video, because you're like Oscar nominees over here, but are we showing any of those pictures? Because I toured the school Friday and was very impressed with what, what the high school looks like, all the hard work they've done, so if we do have any of those, I think it'd be nice to be able to put up here real quick for those watching.
Okay.
I have the East Meadow, I think, in the folder.
I must be missing something in my folder, I'm not looking in the right place, because I didn't see-
I think we got the high school in our email.
Yeah. Uh, let me see if I can-
Not like our regular email, I didn't, I didn't get it.
It might have gone to your school, your Grammy Public School email, if, if that's the one that we- Oh, okay.
Did everyone else get in their personal one, or?
I got it in my school committee, and it's also on the RAM report.
I was gonna say, you should also be getting the RAM report now. I started adding you guys to that, I thought you were already added, but...
Yeah, it's in, I see it in the RAM report.
We're talking about the video?
You don't have to show that now, do you?
No.
Oh, come on!
It is really helpful to see, mine's trying really hard to load, it's not-
Okay, so, since there is such request.
Yeah!
Steven, will you stay for autographs after?
Oh, boy.
Is there a way to, I, I don't even know if you're gonna be able to hear it, so let me know.
Welcome to the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year at Granby Junior Senior High School. We're excited to welcome students back, but we want to let you know how some things might look and feel different as you return to in-person learning at Granby Junior Senior High School. We're going to put together a few short videos for you to watch, and if you have questions, of course, will be available to you. Upon entering Granby Junior Senior High School, one of the first things you'll notice is that the halls have been split into two sides. When walking in the halls, especially during passing periods, it's important that you stay to the right. You'll also find hand sanitizing stations throughout the building. This is in an effort to maintain good-
We might have lost the audio.
Yeah, I lost the audio.
Did it come back, or still not?
The stairwells at the ends of the building, near the library and the gym, are the up stairways. The stairway in the middle of the building is a down stairway. This is important during all times during the day, but especially during passing periods. You'll notice that all bathrooms are single occupancy. If there's somebody already in the bathroom, please wait until they are finished and ha- and have exited. You will also notice differences in the classroom. All classroom desks are six feet apart, and there are HEPA filters in classrooms that help circulate clean air. The HEPA filters in each classroom will be running at all times. Students have no responsibility regarding the HEPA filters, but should know that they do make some sound, and if they notice that they're not on, or do not sound as though they're running properly, they should notify their teacher immediately, so that the unit can be assessed. Again, we have designated up and downstairs for this school year, and the stairs in the middle of the building are for- And the stairs in the middle of the building are for going from the second floor to the first floor.
Hi, everyone. In each classroom, there are hand sanitizing wipes. It is our expectation that upon entering the classroom, you take one Clorox hand sanitizing wipe and clean your space. You can fold the wipe and keep it for use for later. This should be done upon entry and exit. As you can see here, we have social distancing in our hallways with our students six feet apart. There is signage on the floors marking six feet apart as a friendly reminder and directional arrows signifying for students to stay right. To the cafeteria, they grab hand sanitizer on their way in, follow social distancing that is mapped out, and the arrows to keep themselves in one direction. Chartwells has bagged snack and lunch set up right here. Students grab their food and then they sit at their assigned seats. After students received their bagged lunch in the cafeteria, they are expected to sit at the same numbered spot assigned to them. The cafeteria is labeled one to 42. Students will sit on the outside of the cafeteria tables. And the tables that have chairs, they will sit in the chairs. Again, students are expected to sit in the same spaces during snack and lunch. There is signage throughout the building encouraging our students to be wearing their masks and maintaining social distancing. Hi, everyone. Good morning. Want to take a minute to discuss face masks and what is acceptable and what is not acceptable. You are required to wear a face mask at all times during the school day, with the exception of break and lunch. An acceptable face mask fits snugly above your nose and tucked in on the bottom. Unacceptable face masks are gaiters and bandanas and masks that are worn underneath your nose. Please remember that at all times, your face mask must stay above your nose.
Felt a lot longer than six minutes.
If you, if you're not hearing, there's a lot of applause going on.
I'll have to take your word for it.
Yeah.
But really thank you because that was like really great, was super thorough. I think that it was really nice for everyone to see, like, how all of that's gonna work and look. And once again, I was there on Friday and Ally was still there taping six-foot markings in between the desks. And, I mean, it's, her OCD was very, uh, noticed and appreciated.
It's an asset. Um, yeah, so that's, that's our video. So now I don't, I don't know where I left off.
One, I only have one question, and I have the same thing for East Meadow. How are, is there a way that we could put something on the door to the bathroom? I know that they're all single occupancy to like flip it, whether it's a card that's, you flip from green to red if someone enters. That way they're not just, I don't know, walking in or knocking and trying to figure out if anyone's in the bathroom?
Yeah, we actually have those made, ready to go, but we, um, we paused because that would mean all these students touching it before and after they go to the bathroom. So we're still thinking through that, like something in that vein that would note to somebody. Like right now, we're okay because there's only, you know, now we have about 30 or 35 students in the bu- building. So, but I think once we bring more students back, that's something that, um, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to have a plan for. But yes, point, point well taken. And we have, we have what you suggested already set up, but, um, we do think maybe it runs counter to some of the sanitizing and hedging that we're emphasizing. Um, okay, so back to the plan. Again, like some of this stuff just got cleaned up. Um, like teachers assigned to the library, bandroom, or other common spaces will ensure students are six feet, uh, while facing the same direction. So I think that line has been in here, but we just added while facing the same direction because that's, um, you know, when we were talking about it in July and August, we had talked about having dividers at tables and plexiglass and all this. And, um, in the end, the Board of Health recommended having that six feet and facing the same direction. So we've just updated some of our, um, our documents to reflect that. That's the office hours again. Six feet, this is redundant because it's part, it's also in the hybrid plan, same. And there, yeah, so hallway floors marked for directional flow, um, similar to what we just went through in the video. Um, that's been added. Um, those are things that we had talked a little bit about July or August, but hadn't actually implemented. Uh, I think one thing like I know as being a part of the leadership team, it's like, you know, you see one school or one business doing plexiglass or doing this, and it's like, oh, you kind of scrambled to come up with a plan around that. And then you realize that plexiglass is now $500 a sheet and it's not cost-effective. So like you're constantly having to pivot. Um, so, um, you know, so I think, again, like, the updates today, there'll probably be more updates in the next couple of weeks to this plan, I would think, because we're learning new things every day. Um, really like today and yesterday with the seventh graders, we learned some things about them, about, um, arrival time. What does that look like? And, um, break time, what will that look like when we have more students? So those are things that we'll have to update in this plan moving forward. Um, we've created some, the technical assistance support form. Um, so if students, uh, need technical assistance, or they're having a problem with their Chromebook or any of the Chrome or Google extensions, they can fill, um, that out, uh, or we can help them fill that out should they need it. Um, sometimes students just need to call and, um, come swap out a, a Chromebook and we've been working with them on that. Drinking fountains, these are brand new. This is like been Ally's goal for the past couple of years. And, um, you know, the, I guess the pandemic worked out for her in this way that, um, she has water filling stations now because, um, they're more sanitized, they're more san- sanitary. Um, so they have the bottle, bottle filling stations and we have three in the building, two in the first floor, one on the second floor that were, um, put into place last week. Um, ventilation, um, you guys, I think, know as well as anyone, the process it's been around the ventilation. We're still working with D V Engineering, um, to make sure that our building meets the required ventilation and airflow standards. You know, the recommendation has been a window open to provide a source of fresh air and then the HEPA filter. Um, you know, I think D V has said to us that the windows being open are an added source of fresh air. They believe that the HEPA filter alone, um, would manage the job, but we're doing the, um, the windows open as an extra layer. Um, lunch and morning break, students are attending lunch and morning break in the cafeteria. Um, set up two, two, it's the cafeteria's tables are, um, two students per table, so we have to update that. Um, and all students are facing the same direction. Right now, we're fortunate because we have an extended lunch period because we've been running the same lunch period for everyone. That's gonna change as we bring more students in. Um, but the benefit of that has been, you know, students can typically eat lunch in the first 15 minutes or 20 minutes and allows us 10 or 15 minutes to take them outside, take a walk, get them. So it's, they're getting some fresh air in addition to, um, being able to take the mask break at their lunch. Mask break and face coverings, this is, um, similar. See, Ally's in there changing it now. Um, the, this mimics the Board of Health language that Carol, uh, mentioned earlier in the meeting. And I think the challenge with that, I think I said before, we started updating this about two weeks ago. We updated the mask breaks based on the information that was good as of then, and then it changed again Tuesday. So, um, i- it's, it's just changing so fast. Sometimes it is. Um, we do take some time to get back and update this plan. So, um, this is why we wanted to bring it to your attention now, because we had made some fairly significant changes as we were reviewing, um, from our experiences so far. Um, so indoor mask breaks aren't really happening right now in the sense that we thought they would be potentially happening, uh, maybe in July and August. Um, they are happening at break and at lunch. Um, because students need to have their masks off to eat, but then masks are going back on and then we're taking them outside. And actually, I, I'm finding as we're outside, most of the students are keeping their masks on outside. They appreciate being outside and getting the fresh air, but they're not even taking their masks off there. And, um, I don't know if it's just because they're creatures of habit and, um, it's kind of just part of their daily attire now. Um, or if they just don't think to take it off, but we're finding that students have been really, um, really good with the masks. Yeah, I think that it's a three to six feet. Same here, just adding some of like the language that we've gotten from Desi, CDC and things to these documents. Absence notification, this is a new one that we've, um, I don't know, Emmy, if you want to click on that absence one, but it's a Google form. We post, it's in the RAM report every week. So anytime a student's gonna be absent, get dismissed from a class or be tardy, uh, we ask that the parent fills this out. It goes directly to Natalie Lacoste in the main office. If it's a sickness, Natalie can notify the nurse right away, um, so the nurse can follow up with the family. If it's a dismissal, um, of course, we, we'd like that the student is communicating that with their, um, teacher. But this is kind of another layer, another safety net where the, it gets sent to us and then Natalie can let this, the teacher know that so-and-so is gonna be leaving your class at 10:30. And then if they're gonna miss the next class, notify that teacher. Um, so this form, I think, you know, we weren't really sure how it would work out, but, um, it's been a, it's been a really big help for us. And, um, it allows everybody to be on the same ti- same page. And I think, you know, parents were used to calling their students in sick. And then, you know, when people were working remotely and things like that, it probably wasn't the most effective way. So having this, um, it's something that we can always email to parents. Um, point that it's on the website as well, so, um, they can click it and fill it out. And it gives us the information we need, and if we need to follow up, we're able to do that.
Thank you, Steve.
For the changes. And then the other thing I want to talk about was kind of the phasing in. But I think we had, we covered at least what our thinking is on that, so certainly open to any questions or.
Can you refresh our memories on phasing in? What is coming next?
Sure.
Who do we have in the, in the building now and what's coming next?
So right now, we have, um, pull up my notes. Right now, we have our seventh grade cohort A started, um, yesterday. Cohort B will come on Thursday in addition to our, um, other students who had been in. That brings us to about 36 students on, um, Mondays and Tuesdays and 25 on Thursdays and Fridays. It brings us to about 16% um, of our student body as it stands right now. And then in addition to that, we've had another 16% opt for full remote based on, um, the information we have from them right now. That remote piece changes frequently. Like we had, there was a handful of seventh graders who were set to come in this week, who we got emails over the week that, um, parents opted to keep them remote. So, you know, that number is constantly changing. We've also had students who have said they want to be remote for the year, who are saying now like, no, I need to get in for this reason, A, B, C, or X, Y, Z, and, um, we're working with them, um, as well, based on the need and, um, the student support team reviews all that. Um, so the student support team met this morning and, or this afternoon, and they agreed that the next logical step for us to maintain like this process that we're doing and kind of keeping things small and slow would be to invite the eighth grade. And just to tell you a little bit about the process, um, you know, one step we missed last time was notifying you all. So we're doing that tonight. And then, um, we're gonna have conversations with those eighth grade teachers. Um, allow them a chance to ask us questions. This was what we did with the seventh grade. It was really individual calls to those teachers, not through an email. Um, it was an actual phone call, so, you know, we could answer questions if they had them and get clarifications if they needed them. And, um, that, we found that to be pretty effective for the seventh grade. And so the student support team identified eighth grade and, um, we're aiming for December 7th right now. Um, so the next step for us would be, like I said, notifying teachers and then sending out an invitation, um, with a survey to all eighth grade families. And in that survey, basically, it's gonna say you have the option to come back in person or continue to stay remote. If you, you have to reply by a certain date. If you reply after that date or you originally reply remote and then change your mind to in-person, we will accommodate that. But it might be, not be on December, December 7th because all of our planning is gonna go based on the number of students who reply to that survey, um, likely by early next week. Um, and then that will guide our planning for the next two weeks in terms of busing, lunches, seating in the cafeteria, arrival, um, and things like that.
I have a question about the schedule. When we get more people in, when there's more lunches and things like that, will the block schedule have to change to accommodate all of the, the time?
Yeah, the, that lunch schedule, it's been actually really great for us to be able to just have this one set lunchtime. But, um, we're gonna have lunches, as we bring more students in, lunch is gonna get a little shorter for students. And we're gonna have to have more of them, but they'll all still be within that same block that lunch is happening right now. So in week one, it's C block, and in week two, it's G block. So that part won't change, um, but the exact time that they have lunch will likely get adjusted.
And is it, um, is it always gonna be a week one, week two? Or I thought when we went, when we had everybody back, there was something different. Uh, and, and, um, but I feel like it's always week one, week two now, right?
It'll always be week one, week two. You, you are right. We had said if we went back full in person, we had talked about doing a day one, day two.
Right.
But in the remote or hybrid, we kept it week one, week two, just so there's that continuity, um, both for the teachers and the students.
Good. All right. Any other questions for Steve before we let him go? Was there anything else that you wanted to share, Steve?
No, I, I don't think so. Um, I appreciate your support. And again, um, you know, it was an oversight not to let you all know about the seventh grade, so.
I do have a quick question.
Okay.
Um, as of right now, for how many rooms that we have set up for the new group of kids coming in? Do we need more HEPA filters? Like are we, have a plan of how many we'll have to keep? Like, again, keeping that budget in mind. I know, Adam, we're gonna be touching base again about, um, that.
Yeah, we have, um, we do have a plan. Um, we have all the HEPA filters that we currently have in use and another shipment is due any day. Um, and then we anticipate potential for one more, maybe two more shipments, depending on how things work out. Um, you know, like when D V Engineering came in, um, originally, they didn't talk about HEPA filters in the main office area. And then they said. they said, oh, you should have two filters. So we put that took up two filters. There was a room that we talked about putting an exhaust fan in. And when they came and did their measurements two weeks ago, he recommended putting a HEPA filter in there at like thirty percent capacity. So that was another one that we had planned to use elsewhere. So it's kind of been we've been shifting as we've been getting more information, but we are gonna need more than what we have. And we knew that all along, but we wanted to kind of see what we could do with what we have. And the feedback from Davy has been really positive, both in terms of the setup and the soundboxes that the maintenance department have created. So I want to give them a shout out to that. They've worked really hard putting these soundboxes and running ductwork through the ceilings and, you know, the filters themselves don't look like they've always been there, but like the diffusers, the vents that they kind of connect to the ceiling, they look great. They've done a really nice job with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. This was very helpful. And thanks again for the video. We not only enjoyed it, it was very, very informative.
It seemed a lot longer than six.
Yeah, thank you and Ally for all the work you put in that.
And thank you.
All right. So next, I think
Before he goes, and I don't know if Ally is on or not, but it's it's sort of related, but how did the sports end up working out? Like the soccer is done. And I just wanted to touch base on that because I didn't see it on the agenda. But what was the overall sense of it from the kids' perspectives? And, you know, I think it got stopped early because we went red. And I was just wondering like what the overall feedback was on it, sort of off topic, but.
Yeah, Alex, I don't know if you if Ally's on, I think she is, but I think overall, I think Ally would agree. The experience was challenging. I think certainly from her perspective and for the coaches, but the students seem to really appreciate the opportunity. They I actually talked to a student this morning who is in eighth grade and was asking about basketball and you know, the winter is all up in the air and he played soccer as well. And he said something along the lines of like, even if we don't get to play other teams and if you don't get to travel, it's just good to get out of the house and be able to do something active. And so I think that was really the sentiment throughout that they appreciated it at the end. I can't remember if it was because we went to the red or another community went in the red, so we weren't playing a game. So we were only doing practices and the kids were still showing up. And I think, right, it's just like, that's part of team sports, that camaraderie and being together and being out there every day. And I think our students certainly need that now as much as ever. So I think overall, it was really positive experience. And I think Ally will tell you the same thing, but if you had asked her maybe two weeks ago at two o'clock in a random afternoon, she might have been pulling her hair out because she was going in a million different directions. But shout out to Ally for doing such a good job with it, too. It's, there's a lot that we're all juggling, but certainly Ally takes on more than most with her dual roles. So I would say overall, it was certainly a success.
Thanks. Thanks so much. And thanks for you guys for making it happen, Ally especially. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we're gonna move to East Meadow and I think Bill has some information to share with us as well.
Hi, how is everyone?
Good. How are you?
Good, thanks. So I gave you a document that has the changes that we made on it, and it breaks it down by page. So I don't know if you want to pull it up online through it. We had very few updates for for this round.
I'm only pulling, well, I'm first pulling the one that has the updates on it. Okay?
Okay.
All right. And then
Yeah, you can go right to the plan if you want.
Is the How do I get to the? Oh, the plan, okay.
Well, right?
Yeah. All right. See if I can pull this.
Thank you. So if you scroll to page two, we just updated the times to reflect that we didn't have to make in the original plan, we weren't sure if we were gonna have to adjust the start time and end time and have different stagger it or anything. So we just adjusted it to reflect that it's just one start time and end time because we're all coming at the same time. Page under right there, yep, under classroom instruction, we we just updated. Students will be six feet apart when they're eating and and all facing the same direction, like for their snack breaks. That's the only time that they're taking their masks off. Activities that require sharing of any equipment or that would require proximity to other students are not part of the curriculum. All that's been taken out. The swing slide or turnabout outside the the fixed equipment will be disinfected after each recess outside. So teachers that take their students outside, carry that with them. That was a question, I think, in health and safety, or maybe it was at the last school committee meeting. So I put it in here to reflect that as well, so that it was clear that everybody's doing that. And preschool has designated bins for their students. And they have designated bins for their morning class and afternoon classes for the toys. And they get disinfected before the next day when the students come in and play with them. So there's there's actually separate bins and they're all kept in the back there, because that was a question as well. Page three, just the description of just a little further down. Traveling in the halls or the lunch here first, I guess. So so lunch, we have one class eats in the cafeteria at a time. And we can fit one class in there at a time, all facing the same direction. When we get to phase five, with grades three, four, and five in the building, we'll have to look at the classes start eating in the classrooms, because there's just not enough time to have more than four lunches a day. We might be able to sneak a fifth lunch in if we if we shorten the lunch periods and stagger the recesses, but we'll adjust that as we move forward into January. But for right now, each class just eats in there on their own. Further down, we just updated school calendar. And I actually put in the phases that we we were just talking about. Updated the time there just to reflect that we're back on the same time and what the cohorts look like. Scroll down a little further. Should keep going. It should be. That's it, huh?
Yep.
Okay, there should be a calendar in there. I don't know. I don't know where it is. I can try to share my screen. What I what we did was we put the actual school
About this?
Yes, that. There you go. I I guess maybe it was glitching when you scrolled by it.
No, I went too too fast. I think so.
All right. I thought maybe I just missed it. My eyes are tired. So so what we did was we updated the actual school calendar a little bit above to just say what dates everybody came in and reflect what it was. And then on this section right here, Emery, we just, we put the dates in so you can see exactly what dates everybody's come in so far on there and what it is. And then what we'll do is we can go in and we can put these other dates in there tomorrow before we post this. And then to to reflect what we're talking for the for the upcoming dates. And of course, everything that we put in there is subject to change and we are very careful about that. If you read in our weekly update this past week, I put out there just that, you know, we were looking at that November thirtieth date before we came to school committee. So that, you know, people, parents would know and a number of parents called already and said, so it's not gonna happen on the thirtieth. When's it gonna happen? And I said, we're gonna talk about it tonight at school committee and we'd have more information for them this Friday. So we try to reflect that as we move forward. So those were the the changes that we made there. We updated the travel order as well in there. And then we put together this slideshow just for the community's benefit. We've been doing a couple of videos that we've sent out and I think you were included in them just for the kids when they came back, just for each grade level when they came back, just to familiarize them with the school. Wasn't really a training video. And this is just to show you. So we have the arrows in the hallway showing the directions, staying to the right as they walk down the hallway. The main difference with with us at East Meadow is the teachers walk the students from class to class. So there's no bell times. There's no times that the kids are actually walking, you know, in in the halls on their own. We bought a bunch of those pool noodles that are on that picture on the left there. They're six foot noodles, actually. So the teachers can just walk with them and they can put them, you know, out and they can say the students, oh, you're getting a little too close when they're walking down the halls and and make sure that they're spread out six feet. We have the carpet that shows them what the six feet distance is. And then we've made a couple ropes with red tape on them, which show in that picture on the right there, just to put down on the floors and areas when the kids are lining up. So that they have a reference for for lining up. We have marks in the hallways as well. We have yellow stickers that show them that as well. We have the room occupancy signs on all of the classrooms. And on the bathrooms, we have the one person at a time. And we have six foot spacers out in the hallway, so the students know to wait six feet apart while they're waiting. And we prop the doors open a little bit because the way the restroom's already smed, oh, there's a panel when you walk by, so you can't see in. So the students can see whether there's somebody in there or not. They can, when they open, when they walk in, they can see. So we just say, oh, if you see somebody in there, just come outside and wait outside the door till the next person's out. We thought of the cards as well, the red and yellow, the red and green guards. But like Stephen said, it required them to be touching it. So we would have everybody touching those. You know, and after they wash their hands, they'd be retouching something that somebody touched before they washed their hands. So you know, we're we're trying to be creative with that. But right now, we don't have a lot of students in the bathrooms because kindergarten has their own bathrooms, preschool has their own bathrooms. So it's just the grade one students that are using those bathrooms right now. This is a grade one classroom, what a grade one classroom looks like. This grade one classroom has the desk spread out six feet apart like that, so that you can see what they look like. Some of the classrooms have two desks in them side by side. So that and and we'll get a picture of that and we'll update this for you, so that every student has their own desk. They're still six feet apart, but the A student has their own desk and the B student has their own desk. That way they're not sharing desks. When they come in, the A student sits in the A one and the B student sits in their B one. And it it's just the teachers in first grade really like that because the students have a space for their own. And the two desks actually make it so that the desks don't move as easy. You know, the student can't push the desks up and back. But it still maintains the six foot. Picture of the cafeteria, somebody had asked about the cafeteria. So we have seating for twenty-seven students on the main floor of the cafeteria. Same thing as the high school, we got those tables there, the folding tables, we put the chairs at the ends. So students are actually more than six feet apart. They're almost eight feet apart. Same thing at the long tables, the long cafeteria tables. They're they're more like eight eight feet apart or or more when they're sitting at the long cafeteria tables and they're all facing the same way. We can fit twenty-seven, which is the largest cohort we have right now. Then if you look in the background up on the stage, we have an additional ten, eight to ten tables up there that we can seat kids at. So we can get a total of thirty-five students in there, which is the largest cohort that we're gonna have. We have lines on the floor for when they're waiting for their food. They walk in, they follow the arrows down, they stand on the arrows as they're waiting to go up and pick up their food. Then they go around, they come to their seats. There's assigned seating. We don't have a picture of the seat cards in in there, but there is assigned seating and there's place cards and the lunch monitor goes in and puts them out in the same seat every day, so the students know where to sit. Outside, we've set up, the picture on the left shows dots on the grass that we've painted that are ten feet apart. So if a teacher wanted to take their students out there and have class outside, the students can go out there, they can have class. You know, they could read to them, they could they could have a quick mask break while they're out there. And then there's lines on the right are six feet apart for when they're lining up to come back in. They can line up on those lines and and, you know, just maintain that six foot distance. We have the hand sanitizers near the entrances. So everybody takes a squirt of hand sanitizer. They take one on their way out of the cafeteria after lunch. They take one on their way back into the building. Then they wash their hands when they get to the classroom. They're near the front door, so they can sanitize on their way in. Guests can, you know, the teachers can sanitize on their way in. And that's what we have for the pictures in the presentation. We are gonna make a training video to send to the students as as we get into the next couple cohorts, so that everybody can see and and go from there.
Thank you, Bill.
Any questions?
Any questions for Bill? This was, this is a nice update, you know, really.
Now, now we have a Couple of questions, but again, sorry, I can wait until you're all set.
Yeah, I'm good.
So I just have a few, a few things. First, I was wondering if the cafeteria is doing assigned seating? Like the high school?
Yep, I I did it. Maybe I got cut out when I was talking about we made place cards for each student. So there's a name card that the lunch monitor puts down every day. So the student knows exactly where they sit and we have a chart. So they sit in the same seat every day and they sit by class. So like Mrs. Barron's class sits in one area, Mrs. LaPointe's class sits in another, and Mrs. Johnson's class sits in another. So it's it's by classroom as well.
Right. And with the halls, I understand that the teachers are with them. They don't have passing periods, but they are still distanced and, you know, the teacher can't be everywhere. Are we considering adding some more tape down the halls, like what the high school has? Just for a visual, I think it's very helpful.
I don't think we need to split the hall because we never have students, we never have classes in the halls at the same time. Like when third grade's going to lunch, it's all of third grade going the same direction at lunch. If and and it's, we're usually going the same direction all the time. So there's never a time where there's two classes that are coming opposite directions in the hallways. And the teachers are good about that. We have added extra markers in the hallway for the six foot placement as they're going down the hall, so that they can follow and and maintain that six foot, because that's one of the challenges we found is, right, the little ones have a hard time with that. Although today, you know, watching three of the kindergarten classes go by, they were doing a really good job staying with that distance between them when they were coming back from their specials.
Just to chime in, I mean, I agree as well. I don't think that the hallway needs to be split down the middle, but having more of those six foot markings that just naturally the kids know where to stop. Especially because the hallways are so plain. If they had squares that, you know, were colored, that were natural markers, but that's not really
No, we do. We and so that's one of the good things, too. If you remember, the linoleum is different colors, too. So we use that as well. And we tell them that they stay in their own color, like, because there's a yellow tile, like there's a yellow six foot block. Then there's a small set of green, then there's like a big blue. So we use those too, Audrey. But we did order some cute little foot stickers. They're animal feet that we can put in the hallway, too, six feet apart. And we put some yellow stickers down and actually I'll get some more pictures and and update this for you, too. We have some blue painter's tape that we put like in the front hallway along the benches, so that they know where to stay when they're waiting for their ride. We have it spaced out, so there's twenty-four spots out there, I think. There's a lot of markings now. Yeah, this was
Yeah, I feel like there's definitely something to be said. I mean, you go to my building, it's littered with stickers all over the floor. And it's the same as that stuff that you would have for the activity hallway that East Meadow has, you know what I mean? So it's good stuff. It's not gonna like come up just because the kids are walking on it, but it's in the cafeteria, there every hallway, it's six foot markings. We have stairs and, you know, this way up. Right.
There are specials and there's lunch and there, you know, as as more students are in, I imagine people are going to be in the halls with one kid's going to the bathroom, but grade three is going to library, but grade four is going, you know, to media, whatever.
To kind of get ahead of it.
Right, right, just.
So we ordered a bunch of of, like I said, there's animal feet. We've got the six foot yellow markers down like the high school has, and we have some of the just round ones that say six feet apart. And they, like you said, Audrey, I made sure that we got the good ones because I they're the they're the good, like, they're almost the you know, the the material anyway, that's gonna stick, but it's also not gonna pull the floor up when we when we go to take them up either. So we wanted to be careful of that. But we have a bunch more of that coming in. So when we get more kids in, we can do that.
Also, Stephen had mentioned, and I know that I'm sure it's the same at East Meadow with numbers changing with enrollment, whether people are opting to stay remote or go into hybrid. numbers changing with enrollment, whether people are opting to stay remote or go into hybrid. Do we have a more current um scenario? I know not every grade level had a remote cohort, but are we still monitoring that and kind of staying ahead of?
I think you have it in your packet, I think Jaclyn put the updated enrollment numbers in your packet, I sent you a I sent you updated cohort sheet.
Oh, okay, I must have missed it.
Did anybody see it? Yeah, okay. Yeah, I wanted you to have that, because I know Stephanie, you had mentioned that of health and safety. So I wanted you guys to have that, so you could see, and it would also help you visualize as we're talking about bringing the kids in, right, how many kids are in a cohort, because like second grade, the A cohort only has two classrooms, because one's remote. And the B cohort has three classrooms. You know, because um that that other one has the three, so that's, all the numbers are totaled in there for you, so you can see. And it would say A cohort, B cohort, and the total remote for each grade level.
Okay, sorry, I'm gonna look for that, I just, I must have totally missed it.
Yeah, no, I, I wanted to make sure you had that.
It's funny you should say that, because I thought I saw it, and now as I'm looking for it, I'm not finding it.
Yeah, and I saw Jen shook her head, had that she didn't see it either, so I'm sure it's just lost in the
So is it within, because I definitely feel like I saw some, our folders packed this week, so, and it's not, like, I was like, oh, I started to make a subfolder, but then it was like, oh, it will change it for view for everyone, I was like, ooh.
Yeah, I went through all the, all the files, I did not see it, so maybe it got lost and
Jaclyn, can you resend that, do you have it? I can try to minimize out of here and send it to
Yeah, I can send it.
Okay, that'd be great.
Is it the enrollment nine twenty-two? Because I did see that. Uh, it's right now.
I don't know what it's called, do you want to open it up?
Well, nine twenty-two would be the date, right, so it should be sooner than, or more recent than that.
Right.
Where did you find, was that other folder, Steph?
I just typed into the search enrollment and that's what popped up.
Oh, we have, yeah, we have other
I know, I sorted it by date, I just wasn't sure what it was called, so it would have picked it up. It's fine, I can look for it after, when Jaclyn rescends it. I just had a question still, because the remote, the different cohorts is tough. Um, with the high school versus East Meadow and what they're able to do and teach live all day or not, but with those grade levels that don't have a remote cohort, can you just explain how they're doing their remote, because I'm still a little lost on that.
So for the, the grade levels that don't have a remote, they are just, um, the teacher's giving them work and assigning them work. Um, and they're getting instruction on Wednesdays. Um, and then the teacher's giving them work to do on the other days. Um, non, you know, asynchronous work, so it might be watching videos, it might be doing other things. Um, you know, there's only a few kids in some of those grade levels that have that. Um, we did, we added a full remote cohort in kindergarten. Um, and so now we have one in kindergarten, we have one in first grade, we have one in second grade. Um, and then um, third grade, we have one as well. And then fourth, fifth, sixth, we just have three, I think, students or or four students in each grade level that are fully remote, so those teachers are assigning them work and and giving them the the work to do.
So if there is a cohort, they get live instruction?
Mm-hmm.
Three days a week, and if there isn't a cohort, they get live instruction one day a week?
Correct. And that was what we said from the beginning. Um, we give the teachers, some of the teachers, um, will do a morning meeting or or they'll start off the day and they'll have some of the kids in there. Um, but the other ones are, um, you know, just assigning the work and and just doing the work, and it's working out well um in the grade levels, they, they put work in the front office and the people come and ring the doorbell and we we give them the work and they turn in their other work and things like that, so um, you know, there's a constant turnover and even with um a couple of the grade levels that have cohorts, they, they have crates that they'll put out and they'll have kids come pick up their work and turn in their work and things for the full remote ones. Because like first grade, you know, they're seeing the kids now, so they can turn their work in.
Right, but as of right now, each grade level that's in has a designated remote cohort, so I think my question's more for as the grades come in that don't have a designated remote cohort.
We'll have to see, we'll have to see what happens with the numbers, you know, like what happened with kindergarten was as kindergarten came in, the numbers changed a little bit, so there were a couple more students that went full remote. So we're able to add that, you know, right now, over the next two months or so, we still got grades four, five, and six are gonna be full remote. So they're all getting the instruction every day, and then as we get closer and we start, you know, reevaluating numbers and looking at numbers, we can look at that and see what it's gonna look like. So right now, they are getting the full instruction every day. Um, just because they're remote, they're still part of the full instruction, the teachers are teaching the whole class right now, they teach their A and B cohorts together and their remote kids together as, you know, part of it.
How is it working with um the cohort for the kids where, you know, they're, they're in for two days, home for a day, and then back for the other two days, is there, I, um my mind is just all whirled up, I guess, but, so if you're in cohort A, you're in Monday and Tuesday, and then Wednesday, everybody's remote, and then what does cohort A do on Thursday and Friday, they have, they're all asynchronous, like there's nothing that's live for them on Thursday and Friday?
Correct, there might be some, some videos that they watch, there might be some other things that the teachers prepared, some recordings. But they also have the work that the teacher gave them, so a lot of the teachers are are doing the lessons and assigning them the follow-up work to do on their Thursday, Friday. Then when Thursday, Friday students are in, they're, they're working with them and giving them the work to do for their Monday, Tuesday. I spoke with grade, a couple of the grade one teachers today, and they, they were really nervous at the beginning about switching from remote, right, and having all of their students in front of them five days a week to then coming back and having their students in front of them two days a week. And then doing their work on their own two days a week, and they said, you know, just having those students in front of them, they just felt like they were making so much more of a connection and being able to instruct and being able to do so much more just in the two days that they had them in front of them already.
I guess where I'm struggling, and I know that it just sounds like we have to keep reevaluating, but is those grade levels that as of now don't have remote, there's some grade levels that do have a remote cohort, so they're getting that instruction from their teacher on that Wednesday with everyone and their remote cohort group. But then say the next grade level up, who doesn't? Those remote kids only get that one Wednesday, I had a few parents that have reached out, and I'm even thinking to myself, is that a fair equitable thing that some kids are only getting that one day?
But they're not right now, right, so, so everybody's getting it right now.
Right, yeah.
As we get closer to those grade levels coming in, we'll, we'll look at that and we'll look at how many students there are. And we'll have to to look at, you know, what, what the plan looks like. Because like Steven said, there's been a lot of parents who have said, oh, my students are fully remote, and they, then they call and they say, oh, we can't do this anymore, we want to get them in, and then we've had a couple of parents say, you know what? Especially students that are going to children's first, they've, they've they've had to be full remote if they've wanted to keep their spot at children's first. So they've maintained full remote, so it's pretty fluid, and as we bring in each cohort, we can evaluate that. But like I said, right now, we have a full cohort, a full remote cohort for one, a full remote cohort for two, and a full remote cohort for three, so we're pretty well covered up until when we bring grade four in, and then we'll, as we get closer to bringing grade four in, we'll you know, we send the survey out again and we ask the people what's happening and what their preferences are and to update everything, and that's where it's important that people answer us and and, you know, that we don't have to survey, you know, four, or five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten times to try to get the answers that we need. Um, because this is where it's important to find out what's happening.
Perfect, well, that's where I was going with that, is maybe to get ahead of it, if we, now that we kind of are saying that we think we've got that January eleventh and twenty-fifth dates for possibilities that we could think about starting to redo those surveys and get those numbers in, you know, maybe December, so that we're ahead of the ball, I know people are changing their minds and doing what works for them, but just to try to keep all those things online, all right, thank you.
We can change it right up until then, you know, like, we can, we can, we can change it right up until the cohort comes in, and even when the cohort comes in. So depending what the numbers are, you know, like kindergarten, we really didn't know until the students were in. Because some parents hadn't told us what was happening. So we ended up figuring out when the students didn't show up for the A cohort or the B cohort, that they weren't coming in. Despite all our efforts to get a hold of them. But I'll make sure you get that, that numbers, because we specifically did it, so you would see it. Um, so I'll make sure you get the sheet, it clearly lists what the population is in each cohort.
Thank you.
She sent it out, we've got it now in our folder.
Oh, good. We were bombarding her with a lot of stuff to send at the last minute, as Emery, like Emery said, your folders got this much stuff in it, right, so we were sending Jaclyn a lot of stuff, and we, we send it to Carol, and we say, Carol, this can go if you want to approve it. And then Carol says yes to Jaclyn, and then Jaclyn puts it in there, so, yeah, that's, that's the document.
So looking at that, is there a reason that cohort A for grade two is so much smaller than cohort B?
Yeah, because that's where the full remote cohort is, so there's, there's only two classrooms in in grade two. For the cohort.
Here you hold the thirty-four students.
Yep, in the presentation, I said that it's up to thirty-five students that we can see two to a table all facing the same direction.
Okay, perfect.
And we just found out today that there's one student in that B cohort that's gonna be going full remote.
Did you just say there's only two teachers in grade two?
There's three teachers, but for the A cohort, there's two, there's two teachers that are teaching the A cohort live. And one is fully remote, so like, um, Mrs. Tisdale has a B cohort that she's teaching in person, and then she has an A cohort that's remote. Like she's doing her, her remote during her A cohort days, so Monday, Tuesday.
Well, I think it's throwing me off that it doesn't say A or B on grade two, I was like trying to wrap my brain around what it was saying.
Sorry about that, yeah.
Now that I'm, I'm noticing the difference between the others, yeah, okay.
Yep.
My apologies.
No, I'm sorry that it, like I said, we're trying to throw everything together and um, we can clean that up. Any other questions?
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Thanks. All right. So moving to our next item, which is our last item. Uh, superintendent search.
I think Audrey had a question.
You have a question, Audrey?
I did, but I'm fine. I'm going to blow on the mute button today, I don't know.
Don't, don't, don't keep it in. You know, we're at ten o'clock already, so why not?
Constituted of being able to have a remote. Like I'm looking at it, and you know, kindergarten, it says there's only four total remote, but now we have a remote cohort, and then grade two has only six. I don't know, so I was like, oh, how many do you need to have a full remote, is what I started to ponder.
Yeah, there should be more than four, I think, in kindergarten, I think there's six now in kindergarten.
Okay.
So if we, if we got up to six, I think we, 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 we did that, if there were only three or four, we couldn't justify pulling, right, there wasn't enough. It, it made the other cohorts too big, right, you know what I'm saying, like? But with six or more, we were able to combine the classes and and pull that and and, you know, make the other classes a little bigger. But um, you know, we were able to pull it off, so the, the cutoff was, was, you know, if, if there were five or six students in there and we could do it, we, we were able to do it.
Thank you.
Cool, thanks. Um, superintendent search. There was a concern about the budget last time. Um, to be very honest, uh, I'm not sure, and Adam, Jen and I met as the finance subcommittee. We're not, we're not sure that it was supposed to be alarming what the conversation was last time, it was really uh, an indication that with everything happening, we don't know uh, you know, how far out. Uh, we're gonna need some of the things that we had not anticipated, and how, what, what part of the budget will be needed to pay for those things, otherwise, it wasn't really meant to be alarming that the budget was so tight, we could not really uh, get into our superintendent search, so I reached out to Tracy who presented to us, and then she said, you know what, uh, our executive director is expecting your call, um, Glenn Krujer, so I called Glenn and we spoke. Uh, his message to uh, to me and to us is that we understand. Um, but we are here to help you, we want to make sure that you have the best search for superintendent. We can provide you extensive technical assistance, um, uh, you know, if your budget is tight, uh, no worries. Uh, he said, most of the costs that we typically have is related to travel time, onsite time, some of the tangibles that you were looking at, we can look at those and mitigate around it and just do, provide you extensive technical assistance. Um, uh, with, with minimal cost or no cost. And he said, we're here for you. Um, what he asked was uh, whether or not we had a search committee already, which I said yes, and the search committee is already in your folder, you might have seen that, so we're ready to go. Um, I will be very um candid in sharing his input to me, which I completely agreed with. He said, the key ingredient is a search committee that actually coalesces around a purpose, and instead of just a lot of disagreement, they find ways to agree. Uh, so that it kind of smooths the process and then, uh, you know, we can move forward. Uh, so I'm sure the names, uh, folks that I have seen, I don't know all of you, but uh, you are there to really push this process forward, so I'm very confident that we have a good search committee that can start uh, the superintendent search process soon. So we don't really have to worry about the financial aspect of it now. Um, and we can start our search. Yes, go ahead, Carol.
Um, Emery, I just want to let you know that I was waiting for this meeting, I haven't notified all of the members of the search committee, I wanted to, to make sure that we were all on board with everything, so I will be doing that tomorrow.
Um, so, you know, I memorized all those names for nothing, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Adding to that, um, is there a way that we can have a second school committee member on there and not just one?
We can. Uh, but we can't have anyone with the name starting with an A. I think that's the rule, is that, um, let, let's just open
Not necessarily even saying me, even if it's, you know, Jen, Jen, Stephanie, Jen, I don't know, like, Emery
Jen Bartis is already in there.
Yes, I know, I saw that.
The process, so I, if you're interested and everybody else is okay, yes, we can have a second uh, member.
What's the heck, do you, is that gonna do a good enough job?
I do, I don't know, like, I just, I think it's nice to have two of our brains on it, I don't, I don't, that's why I'm not necessarily saying myself, like I said, even if it's Jen.
Are you interested in being the second member?
Is Jen M. interested, I'm not, like I said, I'm not trying to like jump in on it necessarily, I just think it's nice when there's two, I don't know. Personal preference. Jen M.'s not jumping in, so.
I'm not, I, I got a lot on my plate, so that would just be adding more.
I am interested, but at the same time, I, I also think it's just beneficial for two of us to kind of hear because we all hear things in different ways, do you know what I mean, like?
I was going to ask, by the way, if there was a second member interested, so thank you for jumping in, you know, Stephanie is
But at the same time, Emery, you are as well, like, I'm, I'm, I just think it's nice when we get two of our brains kind of on it, so.
No, we have, we have Stephanie representing us on the safety committee, we have Jen, you know, doing the um uh, the, the negotiations and then the finance committee, uh, you know, it's, it's, I think, it gives all of us a different aspect of our role, so thank you for doing that. Cool.
If I do have a question, though, like, I don't Carol just said that people weren't notified, that's why I don't want to say here, can I just like ask later or here, I did have one question on one person. Is that weird?
Uh, can you, can you ask Carol after the meeting, since she said she didn't know?
No problem.
All right, thank you.
Probably just my brain being tired.
Okay.
All right. So, uh, Carol, did you, uh, have anything other than what was already shared in your superintendent report?
Um, actually, I do. Um, can I, will I be able to um, share my screen?
I believe so.
All right.
You see the green share screen at the bottom of the screen?
Okay, hold on, I just gotta move it up, I think. Yes.
Cool, then you can.
Okay, so hold on. You got, I, I've got to be, oh, I put it in and then I didn't do the screen, all right, hold on. And then I have to hit share. Okay, can you see my screen? Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so I did a um, I did a little slideshow. So it's a peek at in-person learning in the Grammy Public Schools. So we've got movement breaks. So here's picture at East Meadow with kids in the caf, in the gym. All doing a movement break. Next, we have.
Are they following something on the large screen? Is that what it was?
Yes.
Okay.
Here we have in-person learning and you can see those desks that um Bill talked about where everyone has their own desk. Seventh grade came in and Stephen and Ally started it with uh an orientation. And you can see they're sitting in those numbered seats and following a presentation by Stephen. Here's uh in-person learning at at Grammy Junior Senior High School where there are socially distancing um and following along. In-person one-on-one learning over at East Meadow. Lunchtime at East Meadow. And as you can see, they have movies periodically, I think, once a week or now that they have the cohorts, I think it's their second day, they have movie time. We've got recess outside where the kids are running around and um, doing some stage performance up there on the stage. And we remind everybody to wear their mask. So we've got a little bit of everybody in there with their masks on. Practice social distancing. As you can see, we've got them at the end of tables. And washing their hands before they go to lunch. And staying safe in our schools.
Cool. This was very cute.
So that's all I got.
That's great.
Carol, can I ask about the enrichment program?
Sure.
Where that is and if we're taking on any more kiddos now that it's been a while?
So um Bill actually could probably speak better to that. I mean, we have kids in the program right now. There has been in some inquiry from other grades. Bill, are you still on?
Yeah, he is.
Well, he's muted. Yep, there he is.
Good thing I didn't go to bed. Five o'clock comes early.
I know.
Um, so right now it's still just staff students. Um, and it's it's still just teachers in our building um for for the the students that are in there. Um, actually, there's one teacher from the high school that's actually utilizing it right now as well. And the reason we've been cautious is we're waiting because we wanted to make sure we were gonna have space and that we could work it in students we have. So we have some parents and what we've asked the parents is to wait until their students come into school. And when their students come into school, if they might need it on the opposite cohort days, that we could probably help them at that point. But until their students come in, we're just kind of waiting because at that point, what'll happen is when the kids are in, uh, the students that are in on A, right, that that are in the A cohort will only need it on the B day. And the students that are in the B cohort will only need it on the A day. So it'll break it up a little. Whereas right now for our staff students, they're pretty much in there every day, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Because they're not in school yet.
As we get closer to the inphasing of um fourth and fifth and sixth, are we gonna get an update as also to like rooms utilized? And, you know, do we have enough room? I mean, I don't think that there's enough kids that this solved our capacity issue. Do you know what I mean? So kind of that being on my mind a little too.
Yeah, so so we we, everybody's assigned a room. All teachers are assigned a room right now. Um, you know, the only time that we had to move that around was when uh when Grammy Junior Senior High School was visiting. But now that they've gone back home and and they're 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 on their own, we're all set and we have um our rooms back. So every teacher's assigned a room and we we have enough space for each classroom. And then um the.
And still that that program as well?
So what'll happen with that program is it'll be in one of the classrooms that has a remote day. So that teacher will be teaching remotely on Thursday, Friday. And then it'll be in a classroom where the teachers teach remotely on Monday, Tuesday. It'd be in that classroom on Monday, Tuesday.
Okay.
It would flow.
Okay. But the teachers do have the option to be teaching remotely from their classrooms too, though.
Well, they have the option to teach remotely from the building and a lot of the teachers have been very gracious when we've needed their space for other things, like when Grammy Junior Senior High School was over. Um, one of our teachers taught in the conference room that was down um in the other side of the building, you know, gave up their classroom and taught from there on the day that they didn't have students because there's a whiteboard in there and there's, they had their projector in there and they had everything that they needed. So um, you know, that's a possibility as well. But for, I know, at least for one of our teachers, she plans to teach. The reason she's being remote is because she wants to be home on those other two days. And she's already said that she'd be willing to share her classroom.
Thank you for the update.
Mm-hmm. Cool. Thank you for the questions. Um, Adam, do you have any updates for us?
Uh, just a a couple. Um, the LED light project that's um coordinated through the Green um Green Community Grant, uh, they're gonna complete the um lights in the high school on the second floor uh by this Friday. I'm not sure if anyone's even aware of that, but we're having new LED lights installed in the high school. They'll be done on Friday. Um, the circulating pumps at the high school, um Stephen got word today from Jay Joyce that their um estimated completion date would be December. Um, I know that date got pushed back a little bit, but um Jay emailed Stephen today saying that they're hoping to complete that by December. Um, and lastly, most importantly, so for next week, um and Jackie put this on the website and I think Bill and Stephen will include this in their uh end-of-week communications to families. But meal service for next week for Thanksgiving, um, we're gonna do it on Monday as normal from ten to twelve. And then Wednesday um from ten to twelve. And on Wednesday, they'll be giving out uh three meals. So Wednesday will be the last um meal service day um next week. And it'll include three meals that will get them through the through the weekend, through the holiday break. So just wanted to put that out there. It's on our website. Um, and again, I think Stephen and Bill will include that in their updates to families this week.
Are we done with the year end?
Yep, so there's one, one schedule. I'm uh finishing up. That'll be submitted this week and then I'll have Chris and everyone sign the certification and we'll get that to the uh to the state.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Adam? Well, good. Uh, Jen, did did CS meet?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Oh, we missed it. All right, so we'll talk about it next time then. That is the end of our meeting uh tonight. Any questions before we adjourn? All right, so I appreciate, actually, this this is much longer than I had anticipated for tonight, but I really think that what was shared with us tonight really helped us, at least me, better understand some of the things that have been in our minds. So I appreciate everybody coming in and sharing uh and appreciate all the questions. With that, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.